Is this on? Is it? Can you hear me? All right, we're gonna get started. There's no one in this front row. Come to the front row and sit in this front row. Especially if you're...
Staff.
Staff, or a consultant that I see coming. Yes, please, sit in the front row. Sasha, we have one more in the front row. Oh, you got one? Okay.
Nothing like calling.
If I call you out by name. Yes, we have here, next to Dawa. Okay. Do we know if we have anyone, if we have folks in the overflow room, or did we all fit in here? Or we don't know yet?
I think we're all here now.
Can we bring in a couple chairs for the back, back there, so these folks don't have to stand? Would it be possible to put a couple chairs back there?
Or you can put some chairs up to you.
Board, Julie's chair is empty? No, no, it's full. Just kidding.
Mayor, probably someone will leave after the consent.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, we'll get started, and if you'll just remember to silence your cell phones, and then please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very long agenda tonight, so thank you in advance for your patience and getting through it. To begin with, we have a couple of, well, we have a recognition and a resolution. The first are the employee recognitions, and I'll recognize the city manager for those employee recognitions.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I know we have a long agenda, but we don't want to cut short these important recognitions. We do this on a quarterly basis. Often, we recognize teams. Today, however, we're gonna be recognizing two individuals. One for a prestigious certification, a prestigious certification, and the other for peer recognition throughout the state of North Carolina. So I'd like to go ahead and just call both of these individuals forward. If Jeff Stodenger and John Filmon would come forward, please. Everyone knows this is Jeff Stodenger, John Filmon, and I'm gonna talk about John Filmon first. Just trying to cross Maggie up. As you know, we have quite a few public events that we schedule in city facilities, and private events that we permit. And it's a very tall task to coordinate these requests, to make sure that traffic flows, that there's sanitation, that the space suits the needs, that, excuse me, that there need to be crossings and intersections, that those are well-protected for the public, as well as the participants in the events. And we have a very, very, almost rabid community celebration schedule. And working through all that, for a number of years now, we've had very capable coordination and review. This is coordination by all the various different departments, from police to fire to public works, transportation on down the line, parks and recreation. That coordination has been done by John Filmon. But today, to raise the bar, I want to tell you that John has spent his time being recognized within his profession, the International Festival and Events Association, and gaining as much information as he can from those peers about how to do this job fairly and consistently, and efficiently, because there are public resources involved in making, pulling these events off as well. On top of everything, this is a capstone. John recently completed a two-year course of study to receive his certification, and that's the CFEE certification. He is one of 200 individuals worldwide who have stepped forward to be a certified festival and event executive. And so we're honored today, tonight, to recognize John for his accomplishments. So if you'll please give him a hand. I know that was long, but the bottom line is John is customer service and communications, and he does it very well. Very proud of him, John. All right. Jeff Stodenger. Jeff Stodenger has served us very well for a number of years. Recently, as you know, he announced his retirement. He's still helping us out on a contract basis. His shoes will be very hard to fill as our community development director. This is a great capstone in his case, because he was recently recognized as the North Carolina Affordable Housing Professional of the Year. And this doesn't come by accident. As you know, we are recognized as the state leader in affordable housing programs, innovating in a lot of different ways, including our housing trust fund. Have a very capable housing community development committee of council that oversees that. It provides staff support to them. He is just a true professional, and I can't say enough about his technical knowledge, as well as the way he works with the other city departments to make sure that these projects that come forward as well are well-coordinated and they tie in well with the community. So just want to commend Jeff Stodenger and introduce him as your Affordable Housing Professional of the Year in the state of North Carolina. These guys are too humble to say anything, so I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a resolution against discrimination and intimidation, and this is a resolution being brought forward by the council. We met in our governance committee today and recommended bringing this resolution forward tonight. Unfortunately, this resolution is necessary. We are hearing of incidents of hate speech in our community, and we want to, as a council, continue to reinforce our position that Asheville is a welcoming community for everyone, and we want everyone to feel safe in our community. This resolution has already been adopted by Weaverville and Buncombe County, and as Gwen pointed out, they had a chance to meet before we did. So, so, so this is our chance. We haven't met in about a month. And I will just read it, and then if anyone has any comments or questions. Whereas the city of Asheville takes great pride in being a welcoming and diverse community where all citizens can live and work without fear of physical violence, threats, or intimidation. And whereas the city of Asheville believes that promoting diversity and inclusion in public policy benefits our community and its citizens in positive ways, while the opposite puts the city and its citizens at risk. Whereas the city of Asheville... ...is committed to treating every citizen equally and without regard to race, color, creed, religion, national origin, gender, including pregnancy, gender, identity or expression, sexual orientation, age, familial status, or disability. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Asheville that one, this council is dedicated to ensuring that the city of Asheville remains a welcoming and diverse community where everyone is treated equally and with respect, and to that end states that hate crimes, threats, or intimidation of a criminal nature will not be tolerated, and every citizen of this great city is called upon to demonstrate that intolerance and hatred will not be accepted within our community. And any person who is a victim of a crime, has witnessed a criminal act, or has information regarding a criminal act, is encouraged to contact the appropriate law enforcement agency. That this resolution shall be effective upon its adoption. And then it says read and approve this day. And that is the resolution in short. If anyone else has a comment, this is an opportunity.
I just have a question. So I think it's great. I'm glad we're doing this. I heard a human rights advocate years ago say that there are no lesser people, and in fact, it's true, there are no lesser people, and I'm glad that we're passing something that reflects this. I wonder if, on the reporting side, if to make it easier, we could, either on the city's homepage, or on the police department's homepage, somehow there could be an easy link to report observed instances of this.
And I'm looking to Dawa. Is there a way, I mean, I guess you mean like to provide the phone number that you would call if you want to, if you want to report a criminal act?
Yeah, I don't, I don't actually know how you report a criminal act, if you have to come down to the police station, or if there's a way that you can do that online. My, I mean, my guess is there might be people who would observe this kind of, this kind of behavior, but not be directly involved in it, who still might want to report it. And I think it makes sense for us to have some sense of the degree to which this is happening in our community, even if the victims of that, of this behavior don't report it. So, just trying to make it easy for us to gather that information.
I'm looking at Dawa, and she is nodding her head. Okay?
Thanks.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is a record-breaking consent agenda, in terms of its length. I think it's the longest I've ever seen. A is E. So I only know of a couple of questions here. One was on item P, a resolution approving amendments to the housing trust fund policy, and I'm not sure which staff versus Jeff maybe. There was a question about, instead of requiring 15 years of affordability, whether that could be increased 20 years, and maybe, I'm not sure what, what was put into the consideration of the length of time, but maybe you could talk to us about that.
The statute that enables local governments to provide incentives to affordable housing requires a 15-year period of affordability. There had been no period of affordability prior in the policy. The period had been basically the length of the term of the loan. So whatever the term of the loan is, that is the period of affordability that has been required. I suppose it could be dealt by increasing the period of affordability in the policy, which certainly can be done, or it could be a matter of negotiating the loan terms with the individual borrowers to determine whether increasing the period of affordability made sense relative to the affordable housing development that was being assisted with housing trust funds.
Is it 15 years, or the length of the loan, whichever is longer?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could?
Yep.
What happens on the ground at, in HCD when these policies come forward is those proposals that have longer affordability terms are preferred, and those are the ones that tend to...
Rise to the top.
They rise to the top. The other piece around the 15 years, it's good to establish that minimum in accordance with statute, but also in harmony with a lot of the bank financing. So the, as those folks are out there trying to figure out how to get the other money to build affordable housing, that our policy is aligned, so when the bank is looking at it, it makes sense according to their calendar as well.
Okay.
I have another question, and I...
On this one?
On this one, this one particular. So Jeff, this is probably another you question. I'm, I'm still very new to this subject, so forgive me if I just don't understand this. But under the closing and funding piece, it, funding land allocate, land acquisition at closing. Allow funding for land acquisition at closing only if the following circumstances are met. The appraised value of the land is 110% or more of the total of all funds used for acquisition. So, explain that to me.
So it's, it's to, it's about our posture of risk, and it's to ensure that the developer who is seeking upfront funds from the city has sufficient equity into the deal to protect the city's interests versus all of the financing that might be available for acquisition.
So when we say the total funds used for acquisition, we're talking about the total city funds?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
The total of all funds.
Of all the funds.
Of all funds. Correct.
Okay.
Are you just thinking like, you have 110%?
Well, I'm just, right. It, I mean, I, I realize that sometimes things go to 11, but, right. If the appraised value of the land is more than the total funds, basically, I mean, yeah, okay. I think I got it. I think I understand your answer.
Right. So, so the city is often, can be in second position, even at the point of acquisition, so it's making sure that the city is adequately protected with a loan towards the property should the project not move forward, that the, there is sufficient protection in the value of the land that the city would recover those loan funds in the event of a foreclosure.
Any other questions on this item? Has anyone ever actually seen the movie Conquest of Canaan? Which is consent agenda, item J?
I know.
All right, well, maybe we can do that one night. I don't know how long it is. It says 35-millimeter film, four reels. That sounds very long. But maybe I'm wrong. Could be.
Depends how big the reels are.
Library of Congress wants it, so they're gonna get it. On item W, Slider. Do we have the Slider, people here? Slider, okay. I saw your Slider yesterday on the street. Do you want to tell us a little bit about Slider?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Your name is?
My, my name is Mike Trombino. Slider is a free on-demand ride service using 100% electric carts. Super simple.
And it'll operate where?
In downtown, Biltmore Village, River Arts District. We go as far west as New Belgium, and as far east as Skyloft Apartments, and also the Hunt Hill Retreat behind the baseball stadium.
And so when you say free on-demand, how do people demand it?
So, right now, we're operating off of a telephone number. You can give that a call, or, well, people just walk up to us and say, hey, can I get a ride?
Okay.
But in a few weeks, our app will be up, so it'll be just like Uber, you request a ride if you're in our service area to wherever else in our service area. And we only go on roads that are 35 miles an hour and under, because the vehicles are electric, they are six passengers, one driver, five passengers. They have all doors and windows on them, seat belts as well, highway, not highway legal, street legal, but they only go 26 miles an hour, so.
And so there, so if you want to get across downtown, it'd be a great...
Exactly. It's a very, it's a great way to connect, you know, the three corners of Asheville, the main, you know, traction to Asheville, Biltmore Village, River Arts District, and downtown.
And how do you manage to offer it for free?
Drivers work for tips, and company makes money off advertising.
Okay, and there was a question about wages that the drivers earn. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure.
What, how much they earn?
Oh, so we're guaranteeing a living wage, which is, in Buncombe County, I don't know if you would like to me guarantee it up to the Asheville city living wage, but Buncombe County was $10.09 when I checked. So we are guaranteeing that, but right now, the drivers are averaging anywhere between $19 and $24 per hour.
Okay. And I, and I guess there was a question about whether or not you can guarantee that amount that your drivers earn?
Yes.
You feel that you can?
Yes.
Would you also be willing to take that to the just economics, living wage of $1,250?
If that's what the living wage in Nashville is, then yes.
I actually heard it just went up to 13.
And it's going, and it's about to go up to 13.
That's the, that's the living wage, $13 an hour without benefits. If they're, if they're, without benefits.
That's fine. Because as this gains, you know, traction, more people are gonna be using it. I mean, we, nobody really, I shouldn't say nobody, but not many people know about us right now, and they're already making that. I think it's, you know, in the first month and a half, two months of being in service, I think that's a, you know, I don't think anybody else can really guarantee $19, $24 an hour, plus I think that's gonna go up, because in other cities, people are making between $30 and $40 an hour doing, having the same service, so.
Well, we did grant a franchise to the Pubcicle, but I don't know that we asked them how much their drivers, drivers make.
We should.
We should have. You were right. Yeah. Okay. Great. Thanks for answering all those questions.
Right.
And this is a good opportunity to let people know about what is Slider.
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else have any questions about the consent, extremely long consent agenda?
Just a note, I want to say thank you to the Monford Neighborhood Association for coming through with funds for a couple new bus shelters...
Yeah!
...in the neighborhood...
Yeah, pretty great.
...that meet the historic look that they're looking for, and so they did some fundraising and came together with that. We're gonna have a couple of nice new bus shelters. Thanks for that effort.
Very cool.
May I, may I make a request? If, if there are further questions, and you're gonna act upon the consent agenda, it might be helpful to take a moment after you approve the consent agenda, just to, because there is an item on here certifying your, your bond referendum vote, and we could provide, Kathy Ball could provide some update for the community.
Do you want to do, we could do that now?
I'm gonna do that.
How about we, Kathy, you want to come talk to us about bonds on the consent agenda? This is item B.
Right.
Oh, I thought this note, that you had more information, was like optional, but apparently we're going to learn more information about it. Okay.
Well, to say that we're fairly excited about being able to move forward, I think would be an understatement, so we're, we're excited about the opportunity to let you know what, what staff has been working on, and the seriousness with which we take the work that we're getting ready to do over the next seven years.
I never know when to click, to make it a slideshow. All right, who knows? Why don't you click to make it a slideshow?
I have to get rid of those little... Very little in my eyesight is getting...
Where's a 13-year-old?
Well, again, we are very excited to be able to come before you and kind of lay out a framework for the work that staff will be doing, and the interaction that we, opportunities that we will have for the community. You all have before you the numbers, and I don't know if you want to discuss the fact that the, the bonds were approved by overwhelming majority. I want to speak more specifically to the staff side of what we're doing and what we would do to move forward. Prior, at the past couple of months, staff has been working hard to try to develop principles around the implementation of the bonds. While we understand that our community wants to see roads resurfaced and greenways, and they want to see affordable housing and parks and recreation, we know that the way in which we do it can make a big difference to our community. And staff takes that very seriously, and want to develop principles about all the decisions that we made in terms of implementing the, the projects. So, these are the four that you see. We want to do it with accountability, with trust, with equity, and with teamwork. So for each of those, each of those times we come before you, you'll hear those words quite frequently. I think the community wants to know and understand that we, we want to be able to deliver these project, projects under budget and on time, so we have been putting together kind of some ways that we can assure that that would happen, and make sure that we inform the community of how that can happen. Each of the projects that we did estimates on included contingencies, so when we did forecasting, we also included inflation numbers, knowing that this, we had up to seven years with the goal of completing them in five. So we included that inflation within it, along with a contingency. We also are prepared to do value engineering. Value engineering is a process that we have to look at when projects come in over bids, and we have to say what is essential, what can we do differently, can we use different materials? So we're prepared to be able to answer those questions. We also have been talking with a lot of communities around the state that are doing bonds, and asking them how they're ensuring that they're coming in under budget. And one of the ways that they're, they're doing it is to require that each of their consultants, when they bring in drawings that are at a 90% completion rate, so in the engineering construction world, there's phases for when plans are complete, 50%, 75%, 90%. We require that they provide us with estimates that at the 90% completion of the design, that they are only using 90% of the budget. So that's the way that we're guaranteeing that we value-engineer the project throughout the whole project, and not just wait till we get the bids in. We also want to be able to deliver these projects on time. In fact, we're statutorily required to do so. So we are in the process of developing organizational restructuring based on these best practices and equity. We have been working on putting together an interim team, which is being able to pull folks together from other areas of the city that know about these projects and have been working on them until the positions, some of the positions can be filled. So what you'll see is January 1st, you'll see an interim team that is ready to start working on schedules, on developing all of the, the cost analysis, and be able to provide information. So we will hit the ground running. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be developing schedules for each of the projects and communicating those to the public, and I will show you some of the ways that we will do that, although there will be, Dawa can speak to, there will be a menu of different ways that we want to make sure the public is informed. This is typically in engineering speak, this is a Gantt chart, and the purpose of this is to outline every project and every detail within the project, so that we can predict and know when, when projects start, when different phases of projects start. So during this six-month period, what you will see is for each of the projects that were included in the bond, you will see a specific schedule for each of those with those design amounts, as well as costs associated with each of those design elements. And that, that is a big picture, but it's to give you some idea of the kind of work that will come out of this interim working group. We also want to communicate, communicate, and communicate. We want to make sure, we know that you all spent a tremendous amount of time from August until November 8th, really a meeting with community members. We want to make sure that we have the public trust, the transparency, and accountability. One of the folks that we're kind of working, communities that we're working with is Winston-Salem. Winston-Salem did a bond in 2014, and it's been extremely successful, to the point that they're reconsidering another one in 2018. They have kind of a program mapper that shows their city. You can go in, and what you see before you is every project is listed. If you go in and select on a specific project on the map, then you will see, this is the name of the project, this is a project in Winston-Salem, but we will have similar with different, we will utilize different drawings and images for those. But it will be able to give the public an idea of when, where, where each of the projects are in the phases, and how much money has been spent on each of those. And so that, that development mapper will be up within that six-month period. So the next steps, what, as I mentioned before, we will have an interim team in place by January 1st. We are working on scheduling a council work session in January to be able to come back to you with more information. Between January and June, we will be working to include the projects within your already-approved bond schedule, I mean, your budget schedule, which will have a five-year capital improvement program. It will specifically delineate the bond projects and the five-year cash flow for those, and then we will hold another budget work session to make sure we finalize that, we've communicated that, and then in June, as part of your adoption of the overall budget, is the time that all the numbers that will be adopted for the capital and operating plan. So that is everything that I've got, and myself or our, our city manager will be able to answer questions.
Questions? I know you sent an email about it. Does this, is this helpful? Can you send us that PowerPoint presentation, especially so if we get questions from folks about the time, the process, the timeline, we can shoot that up? Thanks. That was very clear. And it'll, I assume it'll go on the website? Yes, okay. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. After we get the motion on the table, then you, you know the rules. All right. Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to adopt the consent agenda? Yes. Mr. Sadler.
My apologies, city council. I really should know the, the process by now. Well, I actually have two comments on the consent agenda, and the first is regarding the renewing of the lease for the tourist, McCormick Field, and just wanted to take the opportunity to renew the idea of working with the tourists as we move towards having a parking deck down in the South Slope area. I've mentioned that at another council meeting, and I just thought this might be a good opportunity to, to reinforce that idea of when the time comes, working together on that. And the second comment I have is regarding the wonderful new service that we have here in the community, the Slider. I'm telling everybody about it. In fact, you know, I have the phone number memorized. I'm not sure if Mike mentioned it, but it's 828-275-1731. And at the public safety meeting, Cecil had suggested potentially being able... And at the public safety meeting, Cecil had suggested potentially being able to work a amendment into the franchise agreement that would allow advertising on the outside of the vehicle with the contingency of being able to offer free rides. So, of course, our policy is against mobile advertising, but Cecil had suggested there might be an opportunity to make an exception if free rides are given. So, I wanted to bring that up in that Mike's business model revolves around advertising and this would be a tremendous constraint if he's not able to do that. So, just wanted to see where we're at with that. Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing, yes.
Hi, my name's Andrew Fletcher and I just wanted to say thank you for donating The Conquest of Canaan to the Library of Congress. I have seen this film.
Oh, right. So, great movie.
It is, it's a very important document. I mean, it's no Pelican brief, but it's pretty good. If you actually wanted to see what moving, the moving streetcars looked like in downtown Asheville, back when we had an amazing mass transit system, I think one of the great mistakes of our past as a city has been to remove this. It's absolutely amazing. There's lots of footage of packed square and the, lots of footage on the streetcars as you're going up and down what is now Biltmore Avenue. It's really fascinating and a local film historian is actually putting together a premiere, a new, a restored, translated from the Russian that it got migrated to Russia and before it got to come back to Asheville, interestingly. But it's going to be, it's restored and will be premiered in January in downtown. So, this would be an opportunity.
So, let us know when that, yes.
Yes, and I've been asked to compose a new score for it. So, that's really, it's a very nice local fund project and I just wanted to thank you for donating the reels to the Library of Congress. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't know, should we be alarmed about the Russian connection? It just keeps popping up. I know, yeah, all right. All right, anyone else wishing to comment on the motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I just think we should say thank you to the voters of Asheville for supporting the bond. We asked you to do that and you did that, so thank you.
That's right. Last time we were sitting here, it was Election Day and we did not know yet the wonderful news we would receive that night that the bonds had passed, which helped with some of the other news we received that night.
For me personally.
So, all right. All those in favor please say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, we've adopted the consent agenda. We have also probably a record-breaking number of presentations and reports. Let's wait for the mass exodus of the staff. And now, if anyone is in the overflow rooms, I don't know that you are, but if anyone is in the overflow rooms, we now have available seating in the council chamber. Okay, we have a number of presentations and reports and normally under presentations and reports, we do not take public comment. However, on item C, accessory dwelling unit task force report, I, I, we will take public comment after the presentation. We will, of course, limit that to three minutes per speaker unless you have a group. If you do have a group, I want all the members of your group to be up here and I think we probably shouldn't have anyone in overflow rooms at this point because we've got ample seating in here. All right. So, the first presentation is the exciting audit presentation and Barbara Whitehorn is here, our chief financial officer. I don't think that's your director of the finance division.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Barbara Whitehorn, Chief Financial Officer. I am pleased to say that our fiscal year 2016 audit has been completed and you all should have in your boxes, hopefully you already got them, our comprehensive annual financial report for this year. And in a minute, I'll introduce our auditor to give you an explanation of the audit this year and kind of discuss where we are. Before that, though, I would like to extend personal thanks to Pat Legori, who is the financial operations manager.
Stand up, Pat.
She'd probably rather die than stand up and be acknowledged, but there she is. And Terry Orange, who is our fiscal services manager. They're both people that would probably have preferred I not done that, but they really, the two of them together, took care of the whole audit internally and essentially put together the whole comprehensive annual financial report. I would say single-handedly, but that would be double-handedly, but it was the two of them that really ran that show. So, I want to thank them. And with that, let me see if I can queue up his presentation. I can get it. I bet I can get there.
As you do that, Barbara, I'll just remind everybody, we, to try to cut down on the trees that were, are destroyed, we made the reports available to council, the consolidated financial reports electronically. And if anybody wants to have, have access to hard copy, let us know, but we'll, we'll try to do that electronically.
Sorry, I just got finished assuring Eddie about an hour ago. Your presentation will definitely be ready to go, no problem. So, that would be, did you send it? Yes.
Wow.
Wow.
Do you want us to skip and go to another presentation?
Maybe go to the next one. I'll make sure we get it.
Well, isn't the, isn't the PowerPoint part of our, part of our agenda?
We have that. Should we just pull it up ourselves?
Can we just pull it up or can we pull it up on that computer?
Yeah, actually.
Okay, everyone look away while.
Geez.
This, the thing is so small.
You know, close enough, I'm sure it'll go.
Oh, Maggie.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, no, that's never good.
Geez.
It's under pressure.
What are you supposed to do?
This is not, this is not a good time.
There it is.
Oh, sorry, can we make it?
It's there, it's just a little smaller than you want.
Can we make it bigger? Barbara, can you make it bigger?
Good evening, everyone. I have two points before I start. First, I thought everybody had come to listen to your audit report tonight and I found that that's not true. And then, secondly, you failed your cybersecurity as far as the passwords.
Yeah. That's on next year's side.
Okay. What I would like to do this evening, I've been told I have a limited amount of time. I know you have a really long agenda, but I'd like to spend my time with you tonight on a couple of things. First, introducing our team that we worked on the job, spending a second just on what our role is as your external auditor. And then, under key highlights or results, I've got a slide in here that pretty much encompasses everything as far as the results were concerned. Then, I'd like to spend just a second on the internal control work that we did at the city. Then, finally, the key areas that we looked at. And then, there's also some charts, since there are some pie charts comparing the current year to the prior year. And I've got some discussion points on what the changes were in that. Then, I will summarize and sort of conclude and I'll be happy to answer any questions at that point in time. I'm gonna.
Yeah.
You better just let me do it my way or I'll really mess it up, so. As far as the client service team, I did serve as the engagement partner. Dan Gory, he served as the manager on the job. He was a repeat from the prior year. Tim Feigner, he was also a repeat from the prior year. And then, Michelle Thompson, who was the second partner that basically verified that what I did complied with the standards, she was also a repeat. So, you had a very consistent team from the prior year on the engagement this year. As far as what our role is in the process, first, it's three things. First, make sure that we perform the audit in accordance to the standards that apply to the city. Secondly, to express an opinion on the financial statements. And then, thirdly, from a reporting and communication perspective, there are certain matters that are required to be disclosed to you, the oversight body, if they occur during the audit. I've got some discussion points tonight in the presentation and there's also in your reporting package, we actually issued a second, a separate letter that'll actually go through all those talking points in detail. As far as the results were concerned, there were four audit opinions that were expressed. One on the financial statements, one in determine whether or not you had complied with North Congenial statutes. There was also an opinion expressed on your compliance with the federal dollars that you administered in the current year. And fourth, the, there was an opinion expressed on the state dollars that you received and administered during the year. The city did receive an unmodified or a clean opinion on all three of those reports. As far as internal controls were concerned, there was no findings, no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies noted. From a pure compliance perspective, we found the city to be in compliance with GS 159, which is the statute that governs finance for local governments in the state of North Carolina. As far as adjusting journal entries, we did not request or propose any adjusting journal entries. There were three past adjusting journal entries that we did pass on. Those were actually entries that were identified by management. Due to the timing of when they came up, we decided to pass on those in the current year. And as far as other matters are concerned, overall, the city is doing a very, very good job as far as administering finances at the city in the current year. From an internal control perspective, in order for us to issue an opinion on a set of financial statements, there has to be a certain level of internal controls that are working effectively. We look at internal controls in four basic areas. First, we call it significant cycles, test controls, journal entries, and information technology. The significant cycles are those cycles that we have identified that are the processes that the city uses to initiate, record, and process transactions that generate numbers that go into the financial statements. For each of those areas, we actually, the city has narratives or process documentation that we use, basically going through, identifying, reviewing those processes, identifying those key controls. And then, we actually go in and we'll actually walk through transactions to make sure that's the process that's currently being used at a point in time. Once that is done, we actually expand that and we do what we call tester controls. That's where we'll take a particular cycle. We'll pull a random sample throughout the year and then, we will test those key controls to make sure they have been working effectively throughout the year. We looked at two areas this year, the first being payroll and the second being credit cards. For payroll, we looked at a number of things, basically making sure that the items were properly coded, they were properly authorized, and they were in accordance with the personnel files. From a credit card perspective, that is where we actually pulled a fairly large sample. The sample that we picked included city council members, management, and employees just to make sure y'all are following policies and procedures. For both areas that we looked at, we found the controls to be operating effectively and you were following policy at that point. From a journal entry perspective, what we were basically doing there is pulling a random sample of journal entries and making sure that the person issuing, authorizing, approving, and recording the transactions, you've got a good segregation of duties and making sure the journal entries that we looked at are proper journal entries at that point in time. And then, from an IT perspective, overall, we look at the entity-wide internal control environment over IT. The areas that we are looking at there is backup and recovery, access security, network security, and cybersecurity, which I already made a comment about cybersecurity a few minutes ago. That's one of my accounting jokes. I know that's not very funny sometimes. That's as funny as I get, so. All right, from, once the controls are looked at and we've tested those controls and found them to be operating effectively, the next thing we do, that's where we go in and we verify the numbers that are in your financial statements. We do a variety of tests. I'm not going to go through all the different areas, but primarily, we do a lot of confirmation work. We'll actually contact third parties. They'll tell us what they gave you as far as money or whatever it may be and we verify that, compare it back to your records. We do a lot of vouching of transactions. We do a lot of recalculations of what the city has done themselves. We verify that you had a good cutoff, not only from revenues, but also from an expense perspective. We do a lot of inquiries where we sit down and we talk to people. And then, we do specific tests and the one in particular is that you do have some revenue bonds with some covenants that you're required to comply with. We actually look and verify that you're in compliance with the covenants at the, at the end of the year at that point in time. Then, from a grant perspective, there were three programs that were required to be audited this year. This was a year where there were some new standards that had to be implemented. Historically, when you were looking and testing for single audit, that, those rules were governed by what we refer to as circular A133. There was a new set of guidelines that became effective this year. It's now referred to as the Uniform Guidance. It sort of changed the rules on what we look for and what we do to evaluate on, to see what kind of programs are required to be audited. Plus, it changed the verbiage in the audit reports themselves. For each of the programs that we looked at, we looked at the administrative controls. The administrative controls are those processes that you have to make sure you're administering the programs properly, whether it be allowable calls, whether it be reporting and filing reports timely, those types of things. We also looked and reviewed any outside monitoring reports to see if any third party had come in and looked at any of your grants and had found some issues that would raise our risk in a particular program. And then, we also did a variety of compliance testing in the various grants dictated by what the program was itself. From the numbers perspective, and these next couple of slides are the general fund only. The general fund revenues for the year was around $107 million compared to about $105 million. The major changes that were driving that this year is property taxes were up, you had a good year in sales tax collections. That was somewhat offset by intergovernmental revenues and that was primarily because of elimination of an interlocal agreement that you had that, where you had some revenues and expenses going through your books and you reached, you closed that interlocal agreement out and it's no longer on your books anymore. From an expense perspective, expenses in the general fund was around $91 million versus $95 million. That was primarily driven by your PAL bill expenses that have historically been reported in the transportation fund being moved to another fund. So, you've got expenses on another fund that's higher and you've got expenses in the transportation fund being lower in the current year. From a general fund, fund balance perspective, at the end of the year, the total fund balance was $58 million versus $46 million. The major components of that, if you look at your non expendable, the three components of that is funds set aside for notes receivable, inventory. From a general fund, fund balance perspective, at the end of the year, the total fund balance was $58 million versus $46 million. The major components of that, if you look at your non expendable, the three components of that is funds set aside for notes receivable, inventory, and prepaid. The restricted amount is basically reserved by state statute, which is a statutory requirement in North Carolina to set certain funds aside. Your assigned amounts were primarily for various projects that were underway that you had assigned dollars to. And the remaining amount, which is unassigned, that was basically just the results for your overall... For the year in the general fund. You do have a fund balance policy of 15% for maintaining unassigned. You were in compliance with that at the end of the year. I think the wrong one, sorry. Okay. From a proprietary fund perspective, this includes the Water Resources Fund, parking, mass transit. It also includes the Street Cut Utility, Stormwater, and the U.S. Cellular Fund. Overall, revenues for the year was $53 million compared to around $50 million. The biggest increase in that was charges for services in the Water Resource Fund. Expenses for the enterprise funds was around $45 million versus $44 million in the prior year. Overall, pretty consistent with the prior year. For a cash and investments perspective, cash and investments for the year at June 30th was $145 million versus $114 million. Basically, what this slide does, it sort of gives you an idea of how your funds were invested. And my point in this slide is that the city is doing a very, very good job at trying to allocate idle funds and invest in them in securities of some type to earn what you possibly can. There's really nothing out there right now that you're going to earn a whole lot of money, but the city's doing a good job at trying to invest idle funds and try to maximize the return that you have on those investments. From a capital asset perspective, capital assets at the end of the year was around $395 million versus $381 million. You can sort of see sort of the different breakout of what those assets are. This is net of accumulated depreciation. Overall, the various categories pretty consistent with the prior year. It had some additions, which was routine budgeted expenses, which is offset by depreciation expense in the current year. Then, from a long-term debt perspective, long-term debt at the end of the year was $142 million versus $116 million. The major changes in this in the current year was some installment financing obligations that were entered into that's going to be used for projects. There was also some installment obligations issued to purchase some computers, vehicles, and some equipment. And the other major change in this amount was that there's a liability recorded in the current year for your share of the liability in the state retirement system. In the previous year, there was actually... The state retirement system was overfunded, so you actually had an asset on your books, your pro rata share of the asset. This year, that actually flipped where there's actually an obligation out there at the state level. With that being said, the state of North Carolina is still one of the top five well-funded retirement systems in the state, so relatively speaking, that number is fairly low compared to maybe some other obligations with the other units outside of North Carolina. From a summary perspective, clean opinions on all four reports. There were no adjusting journal entries. I didn't mention the three PAJEs or past adjusting journal entries. Overall, good control environment. And I would also like to reiterate what Barb said. Between Barb, Terry, and Pat, they did a very, very good job. I mean, there had been some turnover in the finance department. They pulled together, worked very, very hard. We would not be here if it wasn't for all three of these individuals. So with that being said, that concludes my comments on the audit for the current year, and I will be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions?
I bet Gwen has a bunch, so can I jump in first?
I've got all mine answered ahead of time.
So back on the financial results slide, the cash and investments, the biggest piece of that is for U.S. government agencies. What does that mean?
What slide again?
This is where...
What slide again?
It's the financial results. So just slide... I don't know if you can... Maybe you can't go back on the presentation. There we go. Keep going, keep going. That one right there.
Barb, you want to come up and say exactly what those are investing?
Actually, I'm... I think I have an expert in that.
Okay.
Pat is our absolute expert on investments, so if you could come up and explain what they're investing.
I don't want to get it wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say it's an allowable investment in North Carolina.
I just didn't know you could invest in U.S. government agencies.
Treasuries are U.S. obligations, U.S. government obligations. And then, the four agencies are Fannie Mae, Federal National Mortgage Association, Federal Home Loan Bank, FHLB, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, and FFCB, Federal Farm Credit Bank. So by statute, that's what we're allowed to invest in, plus commercial paper. We invest in some of that. Those are short-term maturities. These are longer-term maturities.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
North Carolina actually has some pretty tight restrictions on what you can do to your money.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. No. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call on Chief Burnett to give us a presentation on the WNC fires. We had a lot of constituent questions and concerns about the fires, and we wanted to take this opportunity to address the public.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Scott Burnett, Fire Chief. Good news is, it's raining right now, so that was certainly a blessing towards the beginning of December. This was my 22nd wildfire fall, wildfire season as a city of Asheville firefighter, and completely unprecedented wildfire season, like none of us had ever seen before. And that was true for all of western North Carolina, northeast Georgia, and eastern Tennessee. In western North Carolina, there were about 65,000 acres that burned in the month of November. That compares to hundreds of acres that typically burn during our fall wildfire season. So that really puts into perspective how significant this event was. We had over a dozen code-red days, air quality days, here in Asheville, which is also unprecedented. So even though we did not have a significant wildfire event here inside the city of Asheville, we absolutely were impacted. We were able to assist our neighbors significantly, which was nice. We had a number of city of Asheville firefighters that helped. We assisted in 20 fires outside of our areas during the month of November, which, again, also is unprecedented. Inside the city of Asheville, looking at that same time period of our wildfire season last year, we had 11 wildfires that totaled less than 100 acres. I'm pleased to report that although this time we had 44, four times the number of wildfires, we still had less than 100 acres that were burned. So that was due to Herculean efforts from our firefighters to keep Asheville safe, and we certainly did not have a significant wildfire event in Asheville because of the efforts of our firefighters. And so, all of the fires in western North Carolina are 100% contained, except one. There is one in Clay County, and it's 95% contained. And so, really good news. It certainly looks like we are past the worst part of this wildfire season. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? We... I will let you know, we did get an inquiry from our state legislators about what kind of relief we would like during the special session, which is happening at this moment. And we were able to provide them with some information.
Thank you.
I was just curious about how many man-hours you think you all contributed.
And women. You know, hours. Staff hours.
Thank you.
Yes, we certainly had our female firefighters and our male firefighters working very hard. And so, you know, I thought I was prepared for every question and not for that one. But just looking at a very rough estimate, looking at the personnel hours that we had inside the city of Asheville and also deployed on other incidents, would have been about 20,000. So pretty significant, so...
Right.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next two items on our agenda are reports only that are attached to our agenda electronically, and we can review and everyone else can review online. So we're not going to hear a presentation on the strategic priorities of city council or the financial report. So that brings us to the next item, which is the Haywood Street community visioning process. And everybody who is going to be part of this, come on forward. And you all are presenting, and do you have any other members of the task force here? If you're here, please stand. If you'll stand, so we can see you all. You're mixed in with our other task force. You guys could compare notes, the task force. But we do appreciate all of you. We're looking forward to this presentation. Thank you.
Hi. Andrew Fletcher, I'm chair and spokesperson for the Haywood Page Visioning Advisory Team Process. We've got a lot of words. This is Chris Doyle. He's our facilitator with Asheville Design Center. He's kind of losing his voice, so I'm going to do the talking today. Just briefly, in respect of your time and the public's time in this very long session, we came to you on October 25th with an extremely long list of ideas for temporary uses. And you said, "Narrow it down." And a few things, in that narrowing process last month, a few things really came to the top. And in fact, we were able to get unanimous vote when the motion went forward to recommend these. The vote was unanimous, so I'm pleased to say that. And so, just briefly, I'm going to read through them. Open markets that might include farmers' markets and other types. We wanted to keep it open to staff to understand that. Mobile food vending, which might imply food trucks and that kind of thing. Interactive public art, perhaps something for the Public Art Cultural Commission to take a look at. A performance space compatible with the surrounding neighborhood that really came from members of our team that live in the apartment buildings nearby. So we tried to... We included that feedback in there. Movable seating and raised garden beds. And we really find that these six items really work together to try and animate the space. And they really flow to the top so quickly when we said, "Hey, let's narrow this down." So I believe that this is what council asked for when we last spoke to you, and I'm pleased to present this shortened list. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And in terms of the time period for the temporary installation, I assume it would just be for however long it takes before there's some permanent installation there.
Yeah. We have no intention on beginning or start dates. However, sooner is better.
And do we do... You know, just in terms of process here, you know, I'm trying to think if we're going to say yes, move forward with these ideas. I'm not exactly sure what that will mean in terms of logistics. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of different issues here, funding, and who would, you know, manage it, and how would it work. So I assume we'd kind of kick it back to the task force to work with the staff about some concepts for that. Is that kind of what you're anticipating?
We're not sure what to anticipate. So if that's the direction...
You're making this up as we...
That's... Yeah. If that's the direction we get, then... I mean, I know some of our task force members have potential partners in mind already.
Yep.
So I mean, with a short list like this, it wouldn't be difficult to identify a farmer's market partner, for instance. And then, things like movable seating might be something that staff, you know, perhaps in storage, or maybe an acquisition to fill the space with that. We're not sure that we're, you know, leave that ball in their court.
Julie, you had a question?
Well, that was essentially it. The list that you brought us before had a lot of things that would have made... Would have required a lot of coordination. This seems like a good list that requires much less sort of attention and coordination, but still some. So that, you know, that is the question, is are we... Is the expectation that, you know, city staff, either in the form of Dana or somebody else, would be sort of coordinating all this, or where's it going to live? That's my...
Now, my question would be, do we place this under John Philman's purview, who takes applications from groups that want to have events around town? Would his office handle this sort of thing?
You know, what I...
And does that mean we have to make it, designate it as something that he...
Well, I think in terms of process, what we as a council should probably do is look at this list and say, "Sounds good. Keep going." Or, "No, we don't like the list," or, you know, whatever it is. I think the list looks good, and I appreciate the work, and I think you've kind of narrowed it down to some stuff that makes good sense. And then, kick it back to you to work with the staff to think about what would be a proposal for how to implement this, and see what the city management thinks in terms of how you want to house it, you know, what kind of funding we're talking about, what would be... You know, we're going to need to see a fleshed-out proposal that would come back for us, I think. I mean, it may be you get in there and say, "Well, we couldn't figure out how to do a performance space. It wasn't feasible after we looked at everything." Or you may come back and say, you know, "I don't know. Food trucks made the most sense, so we're going to start with that." You know, I don't know. But in terms of the logistics and the rollout, the management implementation and staffing, I assume there's kind of a lot of work there between the task force and city staff. But council, how do you feel about this list? Do you have any questions? Do you want to add, subtract? Are you feeling okay about these in terms of temporary uses?
I think it's really great work that you all have been doing. I appreciate all the time that you're putting into it. It takes a lot of time and energy to lean into this thing deeply and come up with solutions. And so, to all the folks on the task force, I just want to say that I'm definitely supportive of the work you're doing.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, which is, is the... So right now, most of that site is parking. Is the idea that starting at some date, certain these uses would completely and 100% supplant the parking? Or would these... Are these things that would happen? Would parking still happen most of the times, and these things would come in as...
I will urge you to resist your inclination to micromanage this, because I think those are unanswered questions, and we've got to stick it...
Well, I guess I was... Yeah. So I'm just asking what y'all's... The context of y'all's discussions.
I can say that we didn't have a specific idea of like completely wiping the slate clean on the site. As temporary uses, there is a mix of unused and used spaces. Most of the used space is currently parking. And it's not hourly parking. It's longer-term parking. It's leased, and so that might be difficult to use those spaces. However, there's enough other space on the site that I think we could activate it with these temporary suggestions without necessarily tangling with the parking situation that exists.
Great.
Yeah. If you think about like the farmer's market that's been at the Charlotte Street city offices, the parking lot's empty on Saturday. Or UNCA, where the farmer's market is in a parking lot that's not used on Saturday. It doesn't supplant parking the rest of the week.
Right. So you'll have to... More comment. You have to leave one little part as a pit, so John Poile can still call it the pit of despair. All right. Well, I don't know if this requires a vote or just sort of some nodding. Great, great work. And so, we're sending you back to continue to work with staff to kind of flesh out the details about these temporary uses.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'd certainly like to see it moved forward quickly, because it takes time to start scheduling things. And if we don't come up with a plan until spring, it'll be next fall before anything actually occurs there.
Right. And some of these do seem season-sensitive.
Yeah. Like Leaf has a mobile stage that was built by students that could be probably towed in there, and you could have a show. Bang.
Partners like that with real simple execution, that's certainly what we're looking for in a temporary fashion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the home stay permitting update. This is the 12-month review, and I see that Chris Collins is our guest speaker on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chris Collins with the city's Development Services Department.
And to remind us, we asked for this 12-month review.
Yes.
So we're getting what we asked for here.
Here we go again.
In fact, we're continuing, based upon council's direction, to provide quarterly reports. It just so happens that this includes 12 months worth of data. It will... We're obliged to continue to come back to you on a quarterly basis as long as you want to see it.
So we have to say stop?
You said start.
It's going to keep happening. Stop.
Yes. That's how we roll.
Yeah.
All right. Well, now we have some blue slides up there, so... About a year ago, enacted changes in the home stay ordinance, or the UDO portion that deals with home stay permitting. And we've been supplying you guys with some documentally updated... And we've been supplying you guys with some documentally updates. But now, we're about a year out from the outside of this program, which was last November. So, I wanted to give you a brief presentation on what we've experienced, and what some of the numbers that we're looking at are for home stay permitting, and conversely, the enforcement of uses that are operating outside what the ordinance allows. To date, and this graph kind of shows you the activity we've seen. We've seen, at the time of this documents publishing, which was at the end of November, 148 home stay permits be issued. And that has kept us busy. We, of course, have one staff member dedicated to that task right now. We've seen those concentrated, initially, in some of your earlier reports that we provided you with. We saw some concentrations around north and west Asheville for home stay permits. We've seen a trend, seen those kind of start to emerge further east, and even a few south of 40 as well. The home stay permitting process is consisted of simply a one-page application, brief review by staff, and then an onsite inspection by our home stay specialist, our development review specialist who's in charge of that process. And I will say that a lot of these, or a portion of these home stay permits, have been generated through our enforcement efforts, because we have had the opportunity for folks to come into compliance when that's a possibility for them, when they have been found to be operating outside the extent of what's allowed by the ordinance. You'll see right here, this graph, just go through the volume of enforcement cases that we've looked at. And a couple of notable times, you'll see here, this started in November of 2015. We're just ramping up the program. You'll see those numbers relatively low there. We do have, up until recently, have one staff person alone dedicated to both home stay permitting and short-term rental enforcement. And the beginning of this program was pretty much swamped in permit processing, open records requests, and things like that. But you will see, it becomes a program where we are a bit more proactive in the enforcement of things through there. Moving on towards November 16th, we acted recently upon City Council's direction and authorization of resources to further the home stay program and short-term rental enforcement. We did that in the form of hiring a part-time employee to assist with filing and paperwork, of which there's a lot generated by notices of violations and permits and things like that that are going out. And also, by the acquisition of a third-party service that solved a lot of the issues we were having from an enforcement standpoint. The main issue we had there was being able to identify the address of properties that were advertising for illegal home stay activities. This third-party service, as indicated in the staff report you received, has represented substantial savings over another full-time employee. And it's absolutely our belief that it's been more effective at providing the targeted information we needed to move forward. That lengthens in here. You'll see, we finally got on board with these folks in October, and you'll start to see a spike in enforcement in November 2016, where you can see that is illustrated on this. We have started up in December with this part-time position that I mentioned, that is focused on administrative assistant work, to assist with paperwork and filing, and free up our development review specialists for field work, inspections, and notices of violations. We are moving very quickly towards covering these properties that have now been identified. And we have had one week where we've been able to turn out 15 notices of violation on properties that were identified by the service, which is as much as you'll see happened in some months. So, that's been a move forward from the enforcement front. Other than that, I'm prepared to take, well, I've got a few more slides for you. But this one right here shows the same type of information, not quite as localized for short-term rental enforcement activity. You'll see the same kind of hotspots to the north and the west, with some emerging locations east and south. The results of some of these enforcement cases, I did mention that we were able to turn some of these into home stay permits, working with the applicants when they were able to come into compliance. That's been about 10% of the notices of violations that have gone out. We have had a citation issued in roughly 4% or 5% of these cases. And there's a misprint in your report. It mentions that there have been, I believe, five citations issued. We did some further digging after the publication of this. There are actually 11 citations out right now, which means we've gone through the notice of violation process, and no remedy has been established, and the, let's say, the homeowner and property owner has not ceased actions. So, when we get to that point, that's when a citation is issued. Really, a lot of these, 32% violation corrected. That can be anything from stopping operation of the rental, moving your rental to a more permissible 30-day window, or we separated the home stays from here, so it's out of there. Mainly, that's what we're looking at. There are a few instances when we're in commercial zoning where an individual can apply for a change of use and become a legitimate lodging use as well. So, that's what that 32 represents. But between those, we get about 42% of the cases coming into compliance after being noticed of violation. So, that's been a positive trend. I talked about resources briefly. Before we had one full-time, before council allotted extra resources to this effort, we have one full-time position and part-time use of a vehicle dedicated to this. And the operating costs you see for vehicles at the ADU, those are annual operating costs. We've moved on now to one full-time position dedicated to the home stay program and short-term rental enforcement, as I mentioned, an administrative assistant working part-time, our third-party contract to assist with enforcement, and full-time use of a vehicle to conduct inspections and enforcement work. So, all in all, it's represented an increase in funding and resources dedicated to this. But again, through the use of a third-party contract over an additional full-time employee, we have managed to say we estimate roughly $50,000. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
When you approach the homeowners, is it generally that people didn't understand that this was the law in Asheville, that, you know, it really is a non-permitted use? Is that generally, like, you know, I see so many where you say violation corrected or whatever. Is it that people just didn't understand?
I think we see a mixture of cases there. You know, we see folks who are doing this willingly, because there is a lot of income involved in it. And then, we do see folks who either are unaware it's illegal, or unaware it can be attained legally in some situations, I think is what I've seen quite often. And that's represented in some of these change of uses, in that 32%, and those home stay permit conversions, in that 10%.
Any other questions?
So, I just appreciate you bringing it throughout this community conversation that we've been having around this. It's always, how do we, how do we get more data so we can make better decisions? And so, every single time that you bring this, it's just one more piece for us to use as we wrestle with this stuff.
You might have answered my next question, which is, do we want to keep receiving the reports at council meetings?
I think it's helpful.
Do we want to do it every six months instead?
For me, I'd probably be okay with six months.
Six works.
Six months would be fine.
How about we do it every six months instead, maybe?
And can we add, I know the money doesn't come to us, but to the degree that there are fines or settlements and dollars paid, so just so everybody knows, the fines that are paid pursuant to this actually go to the school system. They don't come to the city of Asheville. But I think that's a, that's a dollar figure I would be interested in seeing.
That might be kind of confusing. So, the city can charge an administrative fee for the permitting that covers the cost of the staffing to administer the program. But if there are any fines received for violations under the North Carolina Constitution, those fines have to be remitted to the North Carolina school system. So, we get a lot of communication to council where there's just kind of a lack of understanding about what can be done with that fine money. And then, also, sometimes people still get confused about the room tax, which is now levied on home stays. And that also does not come to the city. That goes to the Tourism Development Authority, which is an independent entity. So, some clarification on where all the money goes. So, you want to see just the total dollars in fines, including settlement fines, even though we don't receive it, just so that we have kind of an awareness of what that volume, what that number looks like? Okay. Would that be all right? Do you include that? Okay.
And maybe also, since the, since a portion of the permit fee goes to cover the expenses of the, of the program, what that, I'm just trying to get to the...
How much we're collecting?
I'm trying to get to the income side of this. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
But I would say we are providing quarterly payments to the school district. So, that's information we get, that's public information.
You can gather that. And then, you want the permitting fees collected that we are allowed to use to offset the cost of administering the program.
And that leads to my question. The permitting fees on home stays do not cover the enforcement of short-term rentals, right?
Right.
I mean, that's a separate, that's a separate pot of money. Right?
Well, I mean, it's all in the general fund, but it's not enough to cover the cost.
Well, but I mean, we usually, we gear our fees supposedly for cost recovery. So, it's cost recovery on the home stay permitting process, not on the short-term rental.
Enforcement.
Enforcement. Right.
Correct.
No, that is correct. I said, we charge $200 for a home stay permit, and as we stated, we've processed 148 of them as of time.
And we're not allowed to recover any of the costs of enforcement toward offsetting the cost of enforcement?
My understanding is not, as we're situated right now. And to possibly answer a question, the 11 citations we have out right now equal approximately, as of last week, just over $400,000 in fines.
But we may or may not see that, those funds, or the school board may not see those funds. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, to our final presentation and report, accessory dwelling unit task force report. And I know you guys have, first of all, task force members, if you wouldn't mind standing up, so we can see you all. Looks like 100% attendance. Excellent. Okay. Thank you. And you all have a, I know you have a presentation organization plan here. So, you just proceed and tell us how you want to do it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for taking time this evening. Ed Manning, Executive Director for Leadership of Asheville, and facilitator for the ADU Task Force. First and foremost, I want to thank the members of the task force for the hard work and diligent effort they put in, and creatively and collaboratively coming up with recommendations for City Council. They deserve a lot of credit. As you probably can guess, several members came into the task force meeting with decidedly different opinions, and they agreed early on to a set of core values. Those included respect, community focus, mission focus, and creativity. Using these values, they collaboratively approached creating the recommendations. I purposely chose a consensus-oriented decision-making process created by Dr. Hornett to support their work together. He's got a seven-step process that's designed to elicit the creative genius of the whole group in coming up with collaborative solutions that address the concerns of all the stakeholders. In the process, the group works collaboratively on one idea at a time, so they're all focused on creating it and making it the best solution possible that would meet the needs of all the stakeholders. The process, and he talks much about avoiding the us versus them, or the either-or mentality that often exists. And so, in voting and in thinking, he suggests using a consensus voting, or what he calls a preference grading voting. I used a common and straightforward method of consensus voting by asking the group members for each of the core ideas that they created, "Can you live with and support this recommendation?" By doing so, we avoided the pitfalls of us versus them mentality, and we were able to gain a 2/3 majority vote for one of the core ideas, and 50% support for the other core idea. I think it's quite noteworthy that the task force itself, even with that vote, decided collaboratively to present both core ideas to you, the council, this evening. And with that, they agreed that Carter Webb and Jackson Tierney would present those. So, I'll turn it over to them now.
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Carter Webb. Last summer, you guys selected me, along with 11 others, to the newly-formed accessory dwelling unit task force. I was selected as a neutral but interested individual. So, I'm here to present Core Idea Number One to you. You guys have received that. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the support, and city staff, the support that we received, especially Shannon Tuck and Robyn Kirin. Thank you for attending the meetings. As you're aware, the purpose of this task force was to help shape decisions about the ADU home stay rentals. City Council appointed the members of the task force to work respectfully together to create well-informed recommendations for pragmatic and land use regulations related to the use, to the potential use of ADUs as part of a home stay operation. Just as a way of background about me, I was born here, and my mother grew up here. And my grandparents lived their entire lives here. I love the city of Asheville. My purpose in applying for and agreeing to serve on the task force was to be a part of deciding what the best interest and the best decision was for the city of Asheville and its residents. I personally feel that allowing ADU, an ADU to be considered as a home stay operation would negatively affect the community. So, you've already received a copy of Core Idea One. I'm just going to kind of summarize it. The purpose, as stated in the document, is to increase the supply of affordable housing for all Asheville residents through existing programs. Such programs will prioritize and balance economic opportunity and growth with the neighborhood's stability, harmony, and character without undermining the character of Asheville's neighborhoods. There are the seven proposals that we put in Core Idea One. The first is to prohibit the use of ADUs part of a home stay operation by proactively enforcing violations and by educating the public. Secondly, develop a public relations campaign to inform the public about the housing situation in Asheville, and the reason City Council voted to prohibit the use of ADU, of an ADU, as part of a home stay operation. Thirdly, provide incentives to residents to build an ADU for long-term rentals. With the use of housing trust fund, low-interest construction loans awarding subsidies to residents who offer affordable ADUs to tenants. Waive or reduce city permit fees to build ADUs for long-term rental. Provide approval process to allow for more all-street parking for ADU residents. The fourth option is citywide seminars to educate and inform residents about the benefits of using ADUs as long-term rentals, and to partner with local nonprofits to develop ongoing support systems for landlords and tenants. Fifth option is to educate citizens on legal short-term rental options through the home stay program and through change-of-use permits. Sixth is to encourage neighborhoods to discuss and plan for an ADU development. And finally, have a, create an ADU presentation using examples of well-designed, well-planned, and well-built ADUs for a road show. Have ADU supporters to assist the city for the presentations, and to educate the community about the benefit of creating ADUs. It was an honor to serve on this task force. As you can see, we're all here. And I think that says a lot about what we did and the time we spent. I think we were scheduled to do six meetings between July and September. We actually had nine meetings that lasted through the month of November. I appreciate the honor, I'm honored to be on part of the task force, and I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Tierney. Excuse me. I am an ADU owner, and I represent other ADU owners within the community. I will cover three things tonight. First is how Core Two was developed. Then, I will review the six major restrictions contained within Core Two, and also touch on a few of the other components. And finally, I will tell you why I voted for it. First, how the Core Idea Two was developed. Ed talked about the process. We diligently followed what Ed laid out for us. The core of the idea was simply to allow short-term rentals in ADUs under the home stay program. However, to flesh it out, Ed had run us through a process called "The Best It Can Be." He touched on that a moment ago. So, at that point in the meeting, we had all 12 of us working together to identify program elements and restrictions to improve upon it. So, let me review the six key restrictions. First is a total... First is a total cap on the number of home stay permits per neighborhood. Then there would be a cap on the total number of permits within Asheville. Then there would be a separation requirement, and you may recall, in the old home stay rule, we had a 500-foot separation, and there still exists today, a 500-foot separation for bed and breakfast, so we would reintroduce that for ADUs. Permits are only good for a certain number of years, and then they would sunset. We didn't talk about whether that would be a temporary or a permanent sub, sunset. And then, you would not be eligible for a permit for a certain number of years if you were to build a new ADU, or if you were to purchase a home with an ADU. So refer to that as a cooling-off period, so you'd have to kind of not conduct that activity for some amount of time. And the last requirement, which is actually in Section Four of the document that you were given, is that all ADU home stays shall require off-street parking. And you may also recall that the current home stay requirement does not have that restriction, and the current ADU construction rules only requires parking for those that are one mile outside of the CBD. So as written, these six restrictions, working in combination with one another, would severely limit the number of allowable ADU home stay permits. So let me give a quick example, if I am a new person to Asheville, and I purchase a home, and it has an ADU in the backyard, I would not be able to apply for a permit for a set number of years. Then I, if I was interested in a short-term permit, then I would have to see if I had off-street parking. If I didn't, then I would have to construct off-street parking to be eligible. Then I would check to see if the total number of permits identified for the city of Asheville were met. If there was still allowable permits to be had, I would then check my neighborhood to see if there were some capacity within the neighborhood, and then if there was, I would then check the separation distance between my ADU and all of the other home stay permits, ADU, home stay permits that existed in my neighborhood. And then, once I went through the permitting process, I would get a permit for a certain number of years, and then it would sunset. The rest of the document that you have in front of you is pretty straightforward, the balance of the language in Section Three is the same as that is found in existing home stay permits, rules, such as inspections, insurance, and requirement that the permit holder be in residence while guests are there. In Section Five, we included the same language as Core Number One that Carter just went through, for the promotion of ADUs as long-term rentals through education and incentives. It is interesting to note, there's been a recent study of people who, I have combed Airbnb data, that there is a 50% attrition rate for those who sign up to be Airbnb landlords. So they have found that it's either too much work, or they're not making enough money, or whatnot, so 50% over 12 months. So we know that people will want to continue to do long-term, so education in that area is helpful. So why did I vote for Core Idea Number Two? In the end, we compromised on all these restrictions and left them intact in the hope of capturing enough Task Force member votes to at least get started with an ADU home stay program. We felt that once this language was handed off to staff and then to council, they would rationalize some of the more rigorous restrictions, such as off-street parking, the separation requirements, as well as the cooling-off periods. We also felt that it was important to at least get the ADU home stay program started and demonstrate the greatest of the fears, such as neighborhood impact and long-term rental availability, were unfounded. However, in the end, we were not able to get enough support from some Task Force members, even those who pressed for the toughest restrictions, but sometimes, that's just the way the cookie crumbles. In terms of the voting, I'm, I'm a little bit confused with some of the numbers that Ed had mentioned. I think there's been a lot of information that's come out in the last week with regards to that. I've heard that Core Number One has either eight or seven, and I've also heard that Core Number Two has either seven or six, or even five. So I think if the council is interested, we should clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I'm going to allow public comment on this item, but do you have any questions for the presenters before we do public comment? There is a question for the present, there, yes.
I have a-
Don't run away, presenters.
Well, mine is actually to Mr. Manning.
Okay, he's a presenter, too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
Yeah. You said that in your, your voting method, that you wanted to find people who could live with and support one or the other of the core ideas.
Or either, or all three, if they had come up with a third one.
Right, but I've heard from at least one of the people on the Task Force that while he said he could live with it, he did not say he could support Core One, and I'd like to know how you resolved that.
The question was put to him just as I did here, can you live with and support, all those who can live with and support, please raise your hand, and we simply counted the hands raised.
And we'll, we have an opportunity to hear from folks if they-
If they change their mind, they can't support it now, that, that's, that happens.
And Mr. Manning, while, while I've got you up here, that, that style, familiar with that style of voting, is it, I'm not familiar with Dr. Arnett's work, but it sounds very similar to dynamic governance, sociocracy, I've seen that used with some other groups here in town, is, are those related?
I, I know a little bit of dynamic governance and have studied it, I, I don't know-
Okay.
-correlation, but consent decision-making has been around for facilitation for years. I've been teaching and doing facilitation for 20-plus years, and asking, can you live within support, is the consensus way of getting to a vote.
Right, and it's a, it's definitely a different way of coming at it than just like up or down votes, and-
Right, right.
Thanks.
Because you're trying to build that collective. Any other questions?
Any, any other questions, Ed?
Not of it.
Not of it.
Thank you.
Question, who's your question?
Jackson.
Jackson, okay.
When, when you were looking at-
You might want to grab that mic.
When you were looking at Number Two, you know, I see a lot of cannot exceed X consecutive years, you know, cap on total numbers, did you talk about what those potential numbers would be? I mean, I'm trying to envision right now, okay, like, we adopt Core Number Two, is that going to make people even happy? Because my sense, I mean, you know, we, we found out earlier today that a lot of these, well, no, I take that back, I'm not sure where all the ADUs are in the city, and I don't think anybody knows, but you know, in general, it tends to be, I think, the older neighborhoods, at least the, the ones that have been around for a long time, which are the ones you want to, and so I guess my question is, is did you talk about numbers? Did you, you know, like census track, you know, how many would that mean? How many total numbers citywide were you, was the team looking at?
Yes, I would say we did not spend a lot of time on that, because we were still playing with what were the building blocks of the, of the idea, but we did throw out numbers just to kind of get some feel or sense of what we were talking about. So for example, citywide, we were throwing around numbers like 200. Neighborhoods got a little bit dicey, because a lot of neighborhoods are much bigger than others, some are much more concentrated than others. We talked about separation requirements. So for example, we played with a 500-foot separation in Monford, and if you had a perfect distribution, you would have 26 ADUs. If you had an absolute imperfect distribution, you would have about half of that, or 13, which mathematically kind of makes sense. So when, when we came to the neighborhood number, it was kind of difficult to come in, but it was in the, in the dozens of numbers, and then in the citywide, I would say it was in the hun, below hundreds, 100 or 200. And there might have been some other X's in there, like years, I think we kind of threw out two years or something like that, two years for a permit, and there were some others that were involved in that decision as well, but those were kind of the order of magnitudes that we were talking about, as opposed to 10 years, let's say.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, don't go away, I had a, I had a question, did you have something else on that?
Well, I was just going to say, as constructed, those six operating together, if, and the other debate we had is whether they should be ands, or whether they should be ors.
Well, that's another, because the way it's written right now, it looks like this is, you know-
Yeah, and so it'd be easier to get a camel through the eye of a needle than to get a ADU home stay permit in Asheville. I mean, it would be very difficult to comply with all six of those requirements. And I think for, just to speak frankly, for the people who asked for the restrictions to be in there, but then didn't vote for the idea, that was kind of the idea, is to try to see if, if by some chance this went through, that we kind of limited the damage, quote-unquote, to Asheville.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned a, a cooling-off period for new homeowners, new homeowners with eight, with existing ADUs, or homeowners who build new ADUs.
Yes.
What's the policy objective behind the cooling-off period?
The policy objective is focused on investors and speculators. So people who have a sole profit motive to come in, either buy an existing house with an ADU, or buy a piece of property that they know can easily place an ADU, build it, operate for a year or two, show a high revenue for that property, and then flip it to somebody else. But I will say, even in that scenario, if the person who's buying it is getting a loan, that's going to be appraised on its, its rebuild capacity, not on its short-term rental income. So it would have to be a cash buyer, but we know they exist. So it was really to tamp down speculation.
Great, thanks. Anyone else have a question? All right, let's do this for the public comment process. If there's anyone on the Task Force that wants to participate in public comment, let's hear from you first, so we know we're hearing from Task Force members, and then let's open it up. So is there anyone on the Task Force that wants to provide public comment? It's not a requirement, it is just an option. You want to reserve your time? All right, so we have a couple of Task Force, do you, would you like to talk, speak now? Sure.
Hi, my name's Kelly Prime, and I was on the Task Force, and I would like to just say that the focus that has been happening lately on the vote itself, I feel like is a little bit of a red herring. We decided to submit to council both Core Idea One and Two, and we did that both in good faith, and in support of both of those. And I feel like focusing on the vote and the decision-making between those two is sidetracking a little bit, and I just feel it'd be better to focus on what, the hard work that we actually put into this, and put forward to you guys. That's really all I have to say.
That's helpful, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right, anyone else on the Task Force who wants to, and, or again, speak to, yes. Ed, do you have something to add to that?
Technically, I'm on the Task Force.
Okay. If you would like to speak, I, I'm not sure, special category for facilitators.
Not being a member of the Task Force, I had no vote or say in, and I tried to keep an objective view of the process. One thing I do want to point out to council is, they did a great job of creating a list of concerns for all the stakeholder groups. They first identified all the stakeholders, then listed all the concerns. We did new, we did not do any weighting of those concerns. So you have concerns of investors and out-of-town folks and all that, equally in there with homeowners and renters and that kind of stuff. My feeling is, it's really up to the council members to weight those concerns based on where you know the city is going, and where you want the city to go. I don't think it was fair to ask the Task Force to do that, that's why we didn't, that's why I chose not to do that. And they did rank it, sort of looking at all the concerns generally, in equal amount, and came up with scores for that, and then went into the consensus vote. So I think the council members, I think it's incumbent upon you and your job, to look at those concerns, weight them according to the direction that the city is moving in, and make a final decision that way. That was my only comment.
All right, anyone else on the Task Force wishing to comment?
But you can do it later.
Or, and I'm not saying you- Yes? Well, you have to come, because you're live on TV, and there could be three people watching us right now that want to know what you're going to say. Maybe four, maybe your family members who are waiting for you to come home for dinner. If you'll, come right here, and, so you got to get, all the way you got to get in this camera, over here.
There you go.
Say your name.
I have a question. My name is John Farquhar. I was a member of the Task Force, but I want to comment as, as a public citizen, or private citizen, and, and not as a member of the Task Force, because I really want to talk about a way forward, based on, on the Task Force's findings. So you tell me where that-
You can, this is as good a time as any.
Okay, I'd like to extend this to 10 minutes if possible, if I can find three of my closest friends to help out. Can we do that?
You have a close friend here. Anybody else waiving their time? This, this would mean you could not speak on this item. Two.
You got two.
One more. Cammy, you can't raise your hand again, doesn't count the reason. All right, we have three.
So I have 10?
You have 10 minutes.
Thank you.
We'll just settle in, we don't have popcorn for this, so.
One of the problems that we had with the Task Force, a continuing challenge, was finding data and examples to go forward, to, to do what I would call rational decision-making, and arriving at what would be a reasonable way forward for Asheville. We had trouble finding the number of ADUs, where they were located, what they were used for, how many were legal, and so on. We also had a terrible time finding really relevant examples of things being done in other cities that we felt would be applicable to Asheville's situation. As we got toward the end of Task Force deliberations, we happened on an, an example from Portland, Oregon. And as we looked deeper and deeper into it, we found that what they had done with ADUs offered considerable promise to what, to how Asheville might, might operate. We followed, we followed up the, the investigation of written material with some phone calls with a researcher from the Department of Environmental Quality in Portland, and also with discussions with the Housing Director from Portland. And I'll share some of those findings with you, and what Portland is doing, and then, and then talk some about how we might shape their experience into a way forward for, for Asheville. I don't trust that. Portland is confronted, confronted with a host, a real constellation of, of housing challenges at every level of, of the economy and, and class. To, to get to a level of only 1,359 ADUs, they had to remove most of the rules and most of the constraints on permits. In a, in essence, they said let 100 flowers bloom as far as ADU construction goes. So as a result of that, they're now being built at a rate of about one per day. They built, I think, 340 over the past year. That's about double to the rate they were getting before. The Department of Environmental Quality, individual who did much of the research, found that if the restrictions had not been loosened, that they would be building about 15% less ADUs. So they still had a fairly significant number being built. Kurt Krager, who was the, the head of the, the Director of Housing, told us that he looks at, at an ADU construction as being a 75-to-80-year life cycle, and that the amount of time that that was going to be rented short-term was really only a small problem, or a small disincentive for the- for the city to allow short-term rentals. Now, this is the really important final, and what we found to be relatively counterintuitive. If you look simply at Portland on here, the second bar, you can see that at the end of one year of short-term rental, as provided by Airbnb, half, about half of the people who rented short-term at the beginning of the year were not renting short-term at the end of the year. The listing had simply disappeared from Airbnb. Now, we can't tell you for certain where those folks went, but we can be pretty sure from our own experience around here that some people simply tired of being short-term renters, they tired of doing the kind of menial labor that was required and the interruptions that were attending the process of doing it. And when the researcher in Oregon looked at cities around the world, he found the same thing to be true. So we think it's probably reasonable to accept that Asheville would have the same phenomenon occur, that if we were to build ADUs with no restrictions, people might rent them short-term for a while, but very, very quickly, they would return to the long-term housing supply. So based on that, we tried to construct a compromise, a way forward. What we're recommending is an 18-month pilot program. And what we've, in putting together this entire solution, we've tried to draw best practices from around the country. So that's what the notations in bold letters are. Santa Fe is now undertaking an 18-month pilot program very similar, with a lot of very interesting bells and whistles attached to the program. We're recommending that you simply expand the home stay language to include ADUs. This is essentially the same as Austin has done. Permit ADU homestays in accordance with existing home stay rules, and don't add any additional restrictions. This is what they've done in Portland. Airbnb has finally folded their restriction towards, about sharing data with the municipality where they are doing business. They're providing New Orleans with the assurance that they will list the permit that pertains to the listing, and that they will also provide hard data from their listings to the municipal authorities in New Orleans. We're encompassing about 150 home stay permits on a first-come, first-served basis in the pilot program. So we're talking about 18 months, 150 ADU permits granted. At the end of the pilot period, we've got actually something that approximates real data that can be analyzed. The number type and source of neighborhood complaints, the GIS location of the permits, we're going to know who they are and where they are. And most important, we're going to be able to survey the results of the ADU owners and find out what their specific neighbors think about ADUs going forward and their experience with them. So it's going to give us a database that we simply don't have now. Based on the information collected, then the council will see its way forward to draw an informed conclusion about whether to sunset the entire program, expand it, change the conditions, or anything of that sort. I think the benefits are fairly clear. The primary benefit that we see, the council, I guess two years ago, passed an ordinance to incent people to build ADUs, and this really provides an extra boost to that. It increases the probability that people will want to build ADUs, and that they will eventually find their way into the long-term rental market. Provides a data-rich framework for future decision-making. You'll actually have some information to go on about not only the ADU population, but what the feelings of the citizenry are about ADUs. Going to reduce the enforcement costs, because we'll have much more information about where and who, and information from Airbnb. Tourist dollars, more tourist dollars will stay in Asheville, going into the pockets of the ADU owners as opposed to the hoteliers. And a final point, we think that there's a real opportunity here to blunt further actions to try to free up whole-house ADUs, because much of the incentive behind the original lawsuit that you had to deal with came from ADU owners who felt that was about the only way that we're going to find some satisfaction. Thank you.
Your timing's impeccable, your time is almost out. Could you tell us, you mentioned "we," we recommend, when you say "we," just clarify for us, who, because you're speaking now as a citizen, not a member of the task force, although you are a member of the task force.
The "we" is myself and some other private citizens.
Okay, okay. I feel like we just got another presentation, so I'd ask anybody who has any questions. All right, no, okay.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else with the task force who would like to speak, or reserve your time to speak, and before I open it up to everyone else? Okay, all right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Yes. If you'll just state your name, and know that you have three minutes, and watch the lights on the lectern, green means go, orange means you're almost out of time, and red means stop.
Thank you, council, mayor, vice mayor, I appreciate it. My name is Dan Rogers, and my wife and I own and operate the Pinecrest Bed and Breakfast. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Asheville Bed and Breakfast Association regarding the ADU situation. ABBA has worked hard to promote and professionalize B&amp;Bs in Asheville and across the state. We have a major stake in ensuring that visitors staying in an Asheville B&amp;B have a very satisfying and high-quality experience. Our B&amp;Bs have by annual health inspections, annual fire inspections, to ensure the safety and cleanliness. Our B&amp;Bs have resident innkeepers that live on-site to enhance the customer experience. We want the B&amp;B brand to not be compromised, and inspections of home stay and STR sites should assist in ensuring that a level playing field is in place. Unregulated STRs will impact the stock of affordable rental properties in our area. We need to make it possible for the people who make Asheville a desirable place to visit, that waiters, cooks, housekeepers, artists, musicians, find appropriate housing to keep Asheville, Asheville. This problem exists today, I know you all are aware of that, and it needs to have some studies continued. The B&amp;Bs have been supportive of many of the recommendations regarding the homestays. We understand when a homeowner does have a room to rent. It is the homeowner who has multiple properties and does not live on-site that can cause a tremendous issue regarding STRs, especially the whole-house short-term rentals. My wife and I are new to Asheville, we appreciate the council allowing this conversation to occur, and hopefully a thoughtful and informed decision will transpire. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? And then next will be whoever raised their hand back there who I can't see. Yes.
Hello, everybody, if you all know me, I'm Rob Newfeld, I write history. And I'm entering this discussion because of my interest in history. I think we are at a historic point right now. In 1988, mountain housing opportunities began building affordable housing. About seven years ago, we began to see vacation rentals increase in this area and across the country. And then, in the last few years, we've seen a boom in the hotel industry. I think our major concern is with affordable housing. The recent update to the Bowen Report indicated that it's still a crisis of enormous proportions. So with an interest in affordable housing, there are some questions that I think are raised. And one is, even with all of the incentives and the education regarding turning possible short-term rentals into long-term rentals in the neighborhoods where short-term rentals occur, will people really be incentivized to do that in those neighborhoods? Plus, some various studies have been cited, there are some certain cities such as Oakland which has been able to apply the transient occupancy tax just from the vacation rentals to affordable housing. So it seems, in opening this debate fully, if there was a way to do this, that we could both go along with the tourist economy that we continue to give steroids to, and increase affordable housing without necessarily the neighborhood conflicts that sometimes occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you know, on the idea of applying some portion of the room tax to affordable housing, I think that is a great idea, and in fact, we had very lengthy discussions with our legislators and our TDA about that very concept. But as of yet, we do not have consensus on something that innovative, but we will continue to--
We encourage everyone who's interested in that to advocate with legislators and with the Tourism Development Authority.
Right, keep letting everyone know how great you think that idea is. That requires legislative change, and so far, no one in North Carolina has that arrangement for their city, but times are a-changing. So is there anyone else? Yes, the next speaker's back there.
My name is Casey Campfield, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a downtown business owner and a local homeowner. Full disclosure, I rent a room in my home instead of using it for a home stay, because I feel like that is the right thing to do. Considering the dire housing shortage in Asheville and surrounding areas, I feel like the only right course of action is to pursue all reasonable options to provide more homes for long-term renters, who comprise roughly one-half of Asheville's entire population. And for that population, every single unit available counts. Waiting for sunset periods, waiting for the 46% of people to, of attrition of short-term rentals is quite frankly, not enough for the people who are struggling to find a home right now. To that end, I strongly support the task force's core idea number one, offering construction and permitting incentives to encourage the building of new ADUs for long-term rentals is forward-thinking and a more-than-fair perk for homeowners. Core idea number two does nothing to provide units for renters, and frankly, with its caps, spatial requirements, sunset permits, off-street parking requirements, sounds like an enforcement nightmare. Thank you.
Good evening, once again, City Council, Madam Mayor Timothy Satter, and I'd like to speak in favor of the first set of recommendations and strongly against the second set of recommendations. I say that as, you know, a person with a business stake, you know, it actually would be in my business interest to speak in favor of the second set, but I just don't think that it's the right thing for the community, and I feel strongly about that. I think that we need to be building for people that are living here and in need of housing, and to maintain the character of our community as much as possible. And I also have a concern, I'm not sure if it has been addressed, but from what I understand, there's 62% of 80, no, I'm sorry, home stay permities that have multiple permits, so 62% of home stay permits actually have multiple properties that they have permits for. And couldn't we, couldn't we keep it to just one permit per person or household? Or is that--
I don't see how that could be, because home stay requires that the owner be, or the owner or lessor of the main residence be on the premises.
Well, they can do it if they own multiple properties, but they have a full-time tenant at their other properties. So they would still show up as the property owner, since it's, permitting is done to the owner of the property.
And I think the stat that Mr. Satter may be referring to is around the STR enforcement in total, that the Asheville Citizen Times and Asheville Blade recently reported on.
Yeah, that's exactly where I saw it.
We've got them both here, maybe they want to--
So, you know, ultimately, I think, let's give the first set of recommendations a chance and see how that impacts the demand in building ADUs. I think that'll do it in itself, that first set, and, you know, maybe if that doesn't work, a year or two years, reconsider it potentially, but that's my comment. Thank you for your talk.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Michael Smith. I wasn't planning to speak, but you talked some about conversations that are being had around creative, income-generating solutions to the city. And I've been following closely the New Orleans agreement that Airbnb recently reached, and I think it has some really interesting, good mechanisms in it that might, again, prove useful in being adopted here. Airbnb has shown that they're going to be moving to a system with New Orleans where you have to put up a photograph of your permit, that's one of the photos in your ad, and that they will be reporting all the addresses of Airbnb members directly to the city. They also agreed to establish a new fee, not a tax, a per-night fee, that Airbnb would be collecting and forwarding to the city directly on their own, from each of them. So because it would be a fee instead of an addition to the occupancy tax, there may be a way to use that fee to enhance the program. And to, as somebody mentioned, use those funds to offset and provide affordable housing. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
My name is Doug Ellingson, and I've provided the city council on three separate occasions with my wife, really good reasons why having ADUs as being a home stay is very important. We actually run a home stay, we've got a violation list, we're in the process of turning our bottom house into a legal ADU, which we have the ability to do, or a legal home stay, I'm sorry. However, what we're going to be doing is taking some of our guests and saying, you're not welcome to come to Asheville. There's folks that, like my wife, who's a disabled American vet who works for the A Hospital, and a lot of people who have mental issues, who come to stay in a facility that's by itself, that doesn't have any type of noise, doesn't trigger any mental health conditions, or that needs that privacy, that if you take away the actual ADUs as a possibility for those guys, they're not going to be able to move forward. So we can actually change and become compliant, and we're in that process right now, but I would really consider this an opportunity for you to reconsider what it is and who's not going to be available to come back to our city, because they have these special needs and want to come here to heal. Thank you a lot.
All right, anyone else?
I've got 10 minutes, and I've got three people.
All right, three people. Yes.
Mayor Manheimer and council members. I'm Helen Powell-Bush, and I represent more than 100 full-time Asheville residents and active voters. We live in many neighborhoods all over the city, and want you to add ADU to the home stay rule. The home stay ADU is a vital part of our city's largest industry, tourism. The home stay ADU fills a niche that would be otherwise unfilled in the housing choices available for tourists and other short-term visitors. The home stay ADU allows the city to welcome the economic influx of valuable tourists of many income levels. Homeowners also benefit from using their primary investment to help them meet the rising costs of living in Asheville. First of all, we thank the task force for their hard work and many hours devoted to this issue over the past several months. We have read the task force's core ideas one and two, and don't agree with the continued time and money to be spent on this issue when the needed regulations are already in place. The city already has-- The city already has regulations that will control the home stay ADU. The definition of home stay is a full-time Asheville resident-owner living in and sharing their primary residence. This effectively addresses the concern that out-of-town investors and multiple homes owned by residents will be used for this purpose. There is no other regulation that can be more, that can more completely control the number of home stays in a neighborhood or on a street. Detached ADUs must meet building codes. These codes determine what can be built on a property and eliminates the need for other regulations. We have a very effective noise ordinance which allows each resident to contact the police about the unwanted actions of their neighbors. There is no reason that the full-time resident home stay owner requires more regulation than do his or her neighbors. The need for a home stay owner to be in the house the entire time they have guests is also unnecessary because of the existing city noise ordinance. Parking off-street is a luxury in many neighborhoods, especially those closest to downtown and therefore most appealing to visitors. Many residents have two or three cars and park them on the street. Families with two parents and two teenagers often have four cars and park them all on the street. The same is true for a house made up of four roommates. If it is necessary for the home stay to provide off-street parking for guests, then all neighbors should be allotted a certain number of spaces and then each find off-street parking for additional spaces. All residents should follow the same rules for parking. The majority of citizens support home stay ADU. In 2005, a survey on the city's site recorded that 77 percent said yes to this issue. In other studies and polls, the majority has also said yes. In the most recent election, the city residents expressed support on this issue by voting Mark Hunt out for his stand against home stay ADU. The ADU has no relation to undermining the stock of affordable housing. The ADU was not nor ever will be affordable housing. It was not built that way and any other rental situation for that space would be the owner renting it out at the going-market rate, not at an affordable housing rate. These are two unrelated situations. In addition, the available housing stock rate has gone up to a healthy 6 percent and the affordable housing bond issue recently passed. We are excited about being a part of the prosperity of our neighborhoods and city and also helping Asheville be a part of the worldwide cultural change towards a sharing economy. This is not a temporary trend and we are a group of full-time residents who are committed to this step forward in our city. In summary, these are our requests for City Council regarding home stay ADU. Allow home stay ADU following the established definition of a home stay, the primary residence owned by a full-time resident. Add ADU to the home stay regulation with controls for detached ADU based on building codes. Allow the city noise ordinance to control neighborhood problems and eliminate the need for the resident-owner to be on the premises for every night. Parking spaces on the street should be equally shared per household. Continue to use the license and annual permit processes that are in place. We asked City Council to vote yes tonight to add ADU to the home stay. There are better ways for our city to use the hours of volunteers and staff and the dollars that have been spent hiring facilitators and companies to search out violators and instead focus time and money on beneficial solutions for our residents. There are creative ideas that can be added to the home stay program that would be beneficial for our city. One idea being tested now in other cities is $1 per night for every stay we earmarked for an affordable housing fund. We urge you to consider ideas like these. The majority of residents have said yes, now we ask for City Council to vote yes for ADU.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak who hasn't waved their time? Yes.
I was going to take a break after this, do our closing before we start the public hearing. Which is the next part.
Hi, my name is Brandy Boggs and I'm hoping just to answer a few of the questions that were asked here tonight. Gwen, you had asked a question about why folks maybe weren't coming forward to get the home stay or when they got the notice of violation, why they got the NOV and didn't know better. And from my experience, about close to 70 folks that I know that are running illegal operations, they are renters and it's the only way they can afford to stay in their place is through doing a short-term rental. It could be illegal home stay, but they're afraid if their landlord finds out that they will get booted and we have quite a few experiences of that happening. So it's keeping Asheville affordable for many renters. And most of the folks that I know that haven't come forward and that's the reason why. Julie, you had asked a question about funds and just so far, there's been 164 permits. They're $208 per permit. So we've made just enough money to cover the out-of-town jobs, the contract we're paying for out-of-town folks, but the 110, the one and a half positions locally in vehicles is all on the taxpayers. And a couple folks have said this, but Esther, you had just mentioned you and Gordon were come up with, trying to come up with ideas, how to fund things. So, New Orleans did do the dollar a night fee, fee not tax. We've talked with Airbnb and they're willing to do that, just how they started collecting the occupancy tax in Buckham County. It seems like it would be easier on a county level than a city level, which could be great and benefit us all more, but they're willing to look at that $1 per night fee. And that would be something that we would have to agree to locally to make that happen, but it seems very likely that that could happen and I could see how we could raise somewhere around 200 and maybe a quarter of a million dollars a year doing that. So, just maybe something to consider, a lot of those options, they're there if we just want to look for them. Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody who reserved their time for later now? Oh, yes, you're-
Eddie Millanaz, Western North Carolina Green Party co-chair, but I'm here to speak as the citizen of Asheville. I would like to second the previous two speakers on this. I come from New York City, I've lived there most of my life and I've seen gentrification happen in places like Brooklyn, which is happening very fast, and I've seen it happen in the Bronx as well. And, living here in Asheville, I've recently moved here and it's been a tough time with just trying to find a well-paying job that will get me an apartment in this area where most of the businesses are. I originally moved to Haywood County and then I moved over here, but I was doing 40-minute, 50-minute travel time just to get to my job, spending a lot of money on gas and everything. And I've seen, I've made friends with people over here who can't afford to live here with the jobs that are available to us, and I would like to please focus on affordable housing as much as possible. From what I've seen scouring for apartments in the area and everything around here, a lot of it is unaffordable to the majority who make 15, 16, 17 dollars an hour, even at full-time rates, trying to get by. I know a lot of people, including myself, who are just one accident away, whether that be my car getting totaled or something like that where all of a sudden I can't pay bills or I can't make rent. So, I would like to second the previous two speakers on the home stays with an emphasis on the affordable housing as well. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish yes? Are you a task force member?
Yeah.
Okay, now we're dipping back into the task force. Okay.
I'm Wendy Dean and I was on the task force, but I'm really just speaking as a citizen right now. I didn't think I was going to speak, but we just, we keep hearing affordable housing and I just, maybe I am speaking as on the task force. I just wanted to clarify, I was one of the neutral parties on the task force and I voted for the second, the core two option. And I actually, after, I had never seen this presentation that, that John Farquhar gave before, but after seeing it and everything I got to learn on the task force, I really would, I would like to support that. And not, not as a task force member, but just as a citizen, that's the thing I would like to, because that wasn't part of the task force. But, but I would like to support that because we heard a lot about the Portland model and I think you're all familiar, but I don't know if everybody in the audiences, that there was just a lot of data, like the very little bit of data we had suggested that the best way to get affordable housing was actually to let people, you know, refurbish parts of their home and build things. And so I was just very compelled by that, that that is actually probably the best thing long-term for affordable housing is to go ahead and relinquish, I mean, they're only suggesting 150, it seems pretty low risk. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Yes. Well, okay, then.
Hi, I'm David Rogers. I did not come prepared to speak. I was hoping we would not go through all this, but since John got up and spoke for 10 minutes, I guess I will too. I feel like that's kind of an end run around the process. We spent a long time hashing this out. This Portland model was brought up at the very last meeting. It's really not fair to bring that up at this point because we could go on indefinitely. We all came to a point where eight of us came up and supported a model that we're presenting to you because we care about affordable housing. We care about housing in general. We compromised. Some of you will remember, back in the summer of 2015, I came up and I was not in favor of expanding the ADU, we supersized them back in the summer of 2015 to make more housing. My opposition to that is I think that they were too big and out of scale. You can go back and read the record about that, I hope some of you remember that.
We remember.
Okay, but my compromise is that now in core one, I'm putting my name behind building more ADUs. I mean, we all came to a new place here. Eight of us support this. I know a lot of you are involved in affordable housing. These are some of the most affordable housing options we have. I live two houses away from an ADU. I understand the person who just bought that or is buying it wants to use it as a short-term rental. It has been an apartment for real people living here in Asheville since the 50s. I don't understand why anybody would want to start cannibalizing our housing. You're about to give away incentives in the amount of $18,000 per housing unit on your agenda item tonight. I don't understand how you with a straight face can give away $18,000 to build a place and then think about taking away units of housing. We don't have enough. Please don't waste our tax dollars.
Thanks. Yes.
Hello, my name's Greta Bush, I'm also on the task force. Also wasn't thinking I was going to speak tonight, but I was appointed as a representative of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee to be on the task force. And one thing that I hear a lot from neighborhoods, especially with the plan on a page that the city has asked neighborhoods to create, is that neighborhoods don't feel like the city listens to them. And so I just want to bring that up again and remind you that in any decisions that you make, please look at the neighborhood's plans on a page. I was actually really split between the decision of what I was going to vote for until I read as many plans on a page as I could find online. And the majority of them, except for possibly one, speaks out against short-term rentals and speaks for providing affordable housing. So I just want you to keep that in mind and please, keep the neighborhoods in mind and what they want, especially after asking them to put so much time and effort into creating a plan, they really want to be listened to. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Counsel, my name is Jane Matthews, I am a task force member. I just would like to comment, I wish we had known there was going to be a public hearing or a comment period because I think, you know, other people would have had comments. But that said, I think it's important to know the task force did look at values and did set values of community and creativity and I think the items in core one were very creative in looking at trying to grow our housing stock from the bottom up and not from the top down. You are doing things to create housing at the top for the very needy, the affordable, you know, what we call affordable housing. But in reality, affordable housing is at all levels and there is a need at all levels for housing. Many of us stair-stepped our way up to housing, to buying a house by being in apartments, sharing rooms, living in ADUs, and I've said this before. I mean, that's how I came into homeownership, sweat equity into homeownership. But, you know, we need to have those options and this task force looked at trying to create ways that we could creatively do that by creating economic benefit for people as well and trying to support them in that endeavor. Most of us will not be landlords, or if we are, it's won. You know, we may, in my old dotage, I may take my son's room and make it an apartment to support us when we don't have a retirement, so, but that I may need help with in being a landlord. And so looking at ways to creatively support that economic venture for people, I think, was a creative aspect of that core one. You know, I think, I think the ADU goal, and again, it's not just the backyard separate ADU, it's an apartment in your basement or apartment in your second floor, are good tools to increase housing within the context of community. And I encourage you to consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Anyone else? I feel like someone on the task force hasn't yet spoken. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I'm gonna, we didn't have a public hearing, but I'm gonna close the public hearing.
I have something I'd like to say.
Yes.
Okay. I do appreciate the work of the task force. I know it was not easy and I know that there were, there was a lot of headbutting and it's always helpful for citizens to give us advice. However, I believe this process was deeply flawed for a number of reasons, including the methodology, the exclusion of participants, misinformation, and a lack of context. I hate to, it's hard for me to be really confrontational, although some people would disagree with that, but I think we were misinformed tonight about the vote that was taken. We were told it was a show of hands, but in fact, one of the people was not in the room. And Randall Barnett was contacted by phone, he told the Mountain Express and he told me by phone that he was misled in supporting core option one and that he regrets that vote and that he did not intend to make it a support. He did not take the position of support, he said, "Oh, I guess I could live with it" when he was questioned. So that vote didn't occur as we were told about it tonight. Some participants didn't even seem to understand the voting process. I know when I tried to look it up online, it was very complex, it wasn't well explained in the minutes. Secondly, the most critically affected parties were excluded from the discussion. We created a $500 a day fine, boosted enforcement with an extra $120,000 and then said, "Why don't you STR operators come in here and talk to us about this?" Right. It's like, it's like trying to get people to pay the marijuana tax. They weren't going to come in and talk, they would have to shut down their operation and many of them were depending on it. Nor could they get their neighbors to say, "Hey, I have one next door and it works great for me." Thirdly, the whole debate has been conducted in the shadow of the Bowen report, which indicated a 2014 rental vacancy rate of 1 percent. But that information was already dated when Mr. Bowen delivered it in January 2015, it's become less and less accurate every month since. Mr. Bowen said a 4 to 6 percent vacancy rate is normal in a healthy market. In the third quarter of this year, one industry analysis shows a 6.8 percent vacancy rate. As measured by Mr. Bowen's yardstick, we now have an excess of rental units, if you look at it that way. Elimination of the short-term rentals that have been controlled by the city has had nothing to do with that increase, it's a building boom that's going on, you have to jump out of the way to get out of the way of apartments going up. Finally, and I think most critically, this task force did not consider the context of their deliberations. A major driver of the debate, as we've heard again tonight, is concern expressed by those who say that short-term rentals are a threat to neighborhoods. If that's the issue, then we on council need to decide how we can best address threats to neighborhoods with the resources we have available. If identifying the most urgent- available. If identifying the most urgent neighborhood problems had been the function of the task force, it might have identified barking dogs, or gas-powered leaf blowers, noise from the stump grinder on Riverside Drive, or parking problems, or the need for a new leaf vacuum for the city. Any number of things. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I would say the most serious neighborhood problem in Asheville is the fact that we lead the state in pedestrian deaths. We've been reminded of that with two cyclists hit in recent weeks and the tragic death of two children crossing a road that didn't have a marked crossing. Judging by the signs around town that urge drivers to slow down, I'd say concern about speeding is widespread. A pedestrian struck by a car going 20 miles per hour has a 95% chance of survival. A pedestrian struck by a car going 40 miles per hour has a 10% chance of survival. Not far from where I live, Barnard Avenue is a cut-through between WT Weaver Boulevard and Edgewood Road. As more people discovered it, a lot of outsiders began to use it at alarming speeds. And recently, the city installed eight speed bumps. Traffic has calmed immediately. Most people are doing 20 miles, the posted limit there now. Transportation Director Ken Putnam has told us that speed bumps, each of those costs $2,500. So that's a $20,000 investment in that neighborhood. Now, why am I talking about this? The additional short-term enforcement money, the $120,000 we added, would cover eight speed bumps in six neighborhoods. Does your neighborhood need speed bumps? We can't afford to put sidewalks on every street like Barnard, but we can afford some traffic calming there. It'd be great to give Ken Putnam the resources he needs to address a long list of other streets that need calming. So, as a council member who needs to make the best choices for our city, I ask myself, is a neighbor who hosts well-behaved, short-term guests in accessory dwelling units the bigger threat to a neighborhood, or is a stranger's racing through at breakneck speed? We could put down speed bumps in six more neighborhoods each year, instead of chasing down your next-door neighbor who rents some rooms. Or we could direct that money to sidewalks on Lake Shore or Hawk Creek, or install pedestrian crossings on Fairview Road where those two children died. I'm clear on the choice I would make for my own neighborhood. So here's where I come down. The task force vote was questionable and contradicted by at least one participant. It did not include substantive input from the most affected parties. It operated under the misapprehension that the 2014 rental housing crisis is ongoing, which it is not, although rents are still high. I'm not talking about cost, I'm talking about the availability of rentals. And in consideration of a purported negative impact on neighborhoods, it did not consider the big picture of how the city ought to apportion limited resources to address the most serious problems in the community. Finally, I note the city ran a survey on our website, and 77% of respondents wanted to add accessory dwelling units to the home stay program. And in testimony before council in August of 2015, the vast majority of speakers were in favor of doing that. So I think it's time for this council to make a decision that should have been made a year ago. And I believe that something like the Portland model, the Santa Fe model, the New Orleans model, a combination of those, is the best way forward. Therefore, I move to instruct staff to prepare the regulatory changes needed to make short-term rental of accessory dwelling units legal in the city of Asheville, together with appropriate rules.
So we have this annoying rule that you can't clap during a council meeting. I'm very sorry.
I would like the second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Or ask a question?
I, I did have some questions. I didn't expect to be doing it in the context of this motion, but I do have a couple of questions.
Do you know who you're asking?
Yeah. So, one is, do we, Gary, I sent this email late last night, so you may not have the answer yet, but do we know how many ADUs have been built under the loosened rules since June 15?
I'm sorry, Chris was prepared to speak up on that earlier. He didn't pass that information on to me.
Okay, sorry.
My regrets too.
No. And then the, so this, the New Orleans situation with Airbnb and the new deal that they've struck, I wonder if, I mean, there are some very positive things there, and just the fact that Airbnb is actually talking two cities instead of at cities. So, Robyn, I wonder if we could reach out to them and start talking about getting their cooperation and enforcement on some points.
Yes, I have been asking them, and they have been promising for about a year, so I can reach out again. So I touch base with them regularly, every couple of months, and they said they'll get back to me and get it. But I haven't gotten it yet.
So this is the information sharing. The other question was whether we could add a dollar, right? I mean, we don't, is there any prohibition on doing that?
Add the dollar to?
Like a fee?
It's an agreement between the city and Airbnb to add a dollar to the nightly charge.
We would have to analyze. That might be viewed as a tax. And there's only certain things that you can tax. I mean, it looks and smells a whole lot like, like an occupancy tax, but we will look into it and let you know the answer on that.
And I think the, the thing that I appreciate most about the New Orleans deal is the, the fact that Airbnb is now policing, to a great degree, the people who are trying to list on its site. I mean, that's, if you can stop it there, then that makes a big difference. So, and I guess the last thing I'll say, since there is a motion on the floor, is, so I just, I want to appreciate, again, the task force, everything you did. That was, it was hard work, and we gave you a very difficult task. I'm, I am not prepared to make a decision tonight. I am, I am, I'm going to vote no on this motion, because I think you have given us a lot of information that we would do well to consider and think about, and particularly given the new information that, that came tonight in terms of the Portland recommendation. So I am, I am voting no, so that we can have more time to think about it and consider it.
Anyone else question, comment?
Thanks again. The, Ed Manning, our facilitator, from the Latin, was it Facilis, to make easy? I don't, I don't know how easy you made it, but I think you made it easier than, than it could have been otherwise. I appreciate your work on this. And everybody, there's reasonable people on all sides of this thing. So I really respect all of the voices that are coming forward to deal with what's being dealt with across the nation and around the world. So there's a lot of folks trying to wrestle with this stuff. And from the get-go, we've had trouble wrapping our arms around it because of the paucity of data out there, and because of all of these competing interests, and because it's hard to see into the future and know what it means. But what we do know is, is what's happening in the, in the present here, is that we are deep in a housing crisis that is happening nationally. And there's no denying that that's true. For those folks who got behind Core One, those ideas around incentivizing ADUs for long-term rental are very, very appealing. We've started, we've begun some of that work at the Housing and Community Development Committee already, but you've really provided us with some other excellent ideas that, that I'm looking forward to pursuing. I really appreciated Casey, who's here, just kind of feeling like it was the right thing to do, to be there for the long-term renters, for 50% of our population here, who are looking for housing. As far as the Bowen report, we're actually getting an update on that this month. And we'll have some figures that aren't cherry-picked from one industry report. As far as whether people live in ADUs affordably, I did. So I know it happens. Whether people are being evicted, long-term renters are being evicted from ADUs to make room for tourists, it's happening. I've heard from those people. So don't tell me it's not, because I know it is. There were really strong advocates for short-term rental on this task force. So the idea that short-term renters, short-term rental advocates weren't represented is simply untrue. And here's something I really want to point out, because what Councilman Bothwell just said was that, hey, if we just stopped all this enforcement, you could have a speed bump. Let me tell you what, what that means is no enforcement at all. That means no enforcement for whole-house STRs. It means no enforcement. We have to have an enforcement mechanism if we're going to have rules at all. So the idea that you would do away with enforcement altogether, and that gets you something else, doesn't make sense. What else did I want to say? As far as Airbnb trying to be helpful, I think that's great. HomeAway, FlipKey, VRBO, Craigslist, how do we get all that? How do we wrap our arms around all that stuff? How do we get all of those entities and the new ones that will be coming forward to, to get on board? I don't know. I don't know how that happens. I'd love to know. Because I think there could be a way forward there, if we could figure all that. I, I think that the idea of an 18-month pilot program is really good, but I think we ought to start with an 18-month pilot program for incentives for long-term rentals for ADUs in our neighborhoods. Let's start by addressing the housing crisis for the residents of the city of Asheville, before we start talking about how we're going to make sure tourists have a place to stay in our neighborhoods. So I'd certainly be in favor of piloting all of these incentives and seeing what works and seeing where we're at. I also know this is going to be an evolving debate. My guess is 10 years from now, there's going to be some version of this conversation going on in this room. And I don't think we're at the final place yet. I don't think anyone is yet. But given where we are in the moment with the housing crisis, with where our neighborhoods are, with the options available to us for policy creation and enforcement, that for now, I think we need to keep a lid on it. Because once you let the camel's nose under the tent, next thing you know, you got a camel in the tent.
Glenn had a comment.
Again, I've talked to several of the task force members, and we really appreciate your work. We, we did intentionally set this task force up with all the various voices. You know, I got a comment that said, well, it sort of was like intended to fail. It wasn't intended to fail. What we tried to do is come up with a balance of voices. I think we did that, but, you know, there was an intentionally, we picked people on all sides of the fence. It's obviously a very difficult issue. You know, if it was, if it were easy, we probably would have had all 12 of you vote one way, and there would be no conversation about voting or anything like that. I do think it's going to, it's, we will be talking about this for a while, but I do not think we have identified a program that is going to adequately balance the various needs of our shareholders and until, or stakeholders. And until we get to a, a program that feels like we, you know, it may not be 100%, but feels closer to where we get that balance, I'm not willing to take away the regulations, because I think it will be very difficult to close that barn door. And so I'm not ready yet to change, to change the current regulations. But I am willing to continue to look at the various alternatives to better balance all the stakeholders' thinking.
Yeah, I have two points to make. Councilman Smith, you're wrong about the money, first of all. The exact point of creating a license system is that we can recover the cost, as we are now with home stays. So we would replace the 1,200, the 120,000, if it costs that much, with the fees paid by people who get licenses. So it would be revenue neutral, or we try to make it that, as we do. So you're, I think you're wrong on that account. And Vice Mayor Whistler, I agree, we aren't at that point yet. But if we, if we agree to move toward making them legal, we can then embrace the ideas from different cities and find the best answer. As long as we're making them illegal, we're not going to make any progress on this, I don't think. And that's why I made my motion.
Well, Cecil's motion is not that we end the enforcement. That's, that's not what we're voting on.
Legal with rules.
Yes. What we're talking about is moving forward and making a vote that I feel like we should have made before we ever envisioned this task force at all. I, again, thank the task force and think they did a wonderful job, and, and thank them for their effort. But I think this comes down to what council needs to do, and that is vote on whether or not they support allowing ADUs as short-term rentals, and then move forward from there.
I think my vote will speak for itself.
And I just have a question to, to, I guess I, I believe more in our ability to deliberate than perhaps Cecil does. So what, what is our next step on this, assuming?
We're about to vote on this motion.
Right, okay. So let's assume that that motion does not pass. Then what is the thinking for how we will continue this discussion, how we will synthesize some of these, this, the information, the reports from the task force, and, and move forward? Because I, I think we do need to move forward. I don't think we're done. I think we do need to move forward in some way, but.
That really was my point in making the motion, is that I don't see another point at which it'll come back, if, if we don't make some decisions.
Well, I think, I think we can create that point. I'm, I'm with Gwen. I don't think we take the lid off and then, and then start putting it back on.
You can have another motion, by the way. If this motion fails, you can have another motion. Technically, yeah, we can have another motion. I think you're talking about.
I'm talking about where, what committee does this end up in?
Okay, so, so that is an issue, because we have, the status quo is that ADU home stays are not legal. So if we do nothing, the status quo is maintained. So we would need to, to, if this motion does not pass, we would need to, if we wanted to, direct staff to take the next steps in whatever direction.
Right, which is why my motion was to direct staff to take steps toward, which would then, I assume, involve continued conversation about what the rules should be. Is it one per person? Is it two years and then out? Or, I mean, all of those, it, it has to be the will of the council to decide, either we're headed that way, or we're going to continue to be, to keep them illegal. I don't see how we move forward if we aren't starting to fashion those new rules. That's my sense.
Well, maybe I misunderstood your motion. I, I heard your motion to be, let's lift the current ban on using ADUs as STRs and direct staff to move forward with looking at some of these options. That's very different than just directing staff.
I think what Cecil's means is, we'll have to see a final proposal.
Yeah.
Right?
And it will take months.
So can we get clarity on the motion?
So, so.
So I can repeat it. Therefore, I move to instruct staff to prepare the regulatory changes needed to make short-term rental of accessory dwelling units legal in the city of Asheville, together with necessary rules.
Okay.
And that would come back for a vote.
Right, any ordinance change would have to come back to us for a vote. So I would offer that, I, I very much appreciate the task force's work. And I'm sorry that it was probably a longer commitment than you were hoping for, and maybe a little bit more contentious than your karma enjoyed. And so, so you get a reprieve for a couple of months before we ask you to join another task force.
But we have your names and telephone numbers, so.
Yeah, we do have your name.
Don't think you're going to escape.
You know, it's been my experience in Asheville that we have a community that really wants to participate in community decisions. And I think that's fantastic. That's not true in every community. And so I actually really like the task force concept, because it allows a group of balanced thinkers to really dissect a complicated issue and spend many more hours on it than city council is able to do. Although, I will say at this point, we've logged several hours on this topic. So.
Nothing like baby.
Right, right. So I, for me, that, that's really helpful. So in terms of the, the process, I, I think it is important for council to support a task force recommendation. Just because I, I, you know, we just heard tonight from the Haywood Street Task Force, and I would hate to have them think that if we're not seriously considering a task force recommendation, that we're not, you know, what are all these hours for? That you're spending of your non-paid time to, to do this. So, so to me, that is sort of the overriding factor, in that it's a task force recommendation. And one of my concerns was that there would be so much disruption in terms of what process you use to, so, so as to invalidate the task force recommendation. But you're all here, and pretty much all of you spoke. So I, I have a sense, I think, that a slim, but slim majority would like to maintain prohibiting ADUs from becoming home stays. I did very much appreciate in your report, your recommendations about teaching people basically how to do ADUs, similar to the information we've been providing people about how to build a, to open a restaurant. It's not easy if you've never done it before, so maybe some workshops on what the process is, and some literature about how you navigate the, the regulatory is and some literature about how you navigate the, the regulatory process for building an ADUs, an ADU. I appreciated those recommendations. I thought that was a really great idea. And that's something the city certainly can do. So to me, this is a fluid and evolving issue. I, I always am skeptical about what someone says we'll be doing in 10 years or 20 years because three years ago, we weren't even having this conversation four years ago, and it wasn't conceived of. So it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to believe what this economy will look like, what people want to do, that we can know that for sure. So what I would offer is, I, my vote in support of the task force recommendation tonight is not closing the door forever on this discussion. I am deeply concerned about people being able to continue to afford to live in their homes and using this as a way to do that, balanced with people who are needing a home and looking to an ADU as their home and their affordable home. I, you know, anecdotally, and I don't like to make any decisions anecdotally, but I too lived in an ADU, a basement apartment, when I went to school in Boulder, which is one of the hottest towns, if there ever was one, for short-term rentals in the ADU debate. And if it weren't for me and my three roommates crammed into a basement apartment, you know, off-campus student housing wouldn't have been possible for me. And I'm, we don't have any students here tonight, but I'm assuming that surrounding UNC Asheville, where we probably have some students that were living, that are living now, like I lived then. So, but, but again, more important to me was that, is that the recommendation from this task force is to continue with the policy we have in place now. And then you've made many additional recommendations for how we can build on that. And, you know, if this council is willing, I certainly would revisit this issue because, again, I do think it is quickly evolving. I, I am forever frustrated that we don't have a good number of, how many ADUs are we talking about? Is it 50? Is it 150? You know, everyone has a, has a guess, but we don't have documentation on that unless it was built in very recent history and permitted as an ADU. We don't know about it. So, so that, that's kind of where I'm coming down on this issue tonight. And it's a real, it's a real struggle for me, just, and, and all of us and all of you. And so I appreciate that, you know, we just, we just wanted to drag some more people into this struggle. So thank you for being willing to do that with us.
I want to jump in, and I'll be as brief as I can. I don't think, I don't think Councilman Bothwell's motion is invalidation of, of the task force recommendations. I think the key word is, is recommendation, and, you know, that's, that's, you know, we can, we can take those recommendations, but at the same time, I think you also have to look at the fact that council is charged with making the tough decisions. So you take that recommendation, you weigh that recommendation on what you've been charged to do, and you make a decision based on that. So I appreciate the task force. I appreciate the work that you've put into this, but at the end of the day, the recommendations are that, they are recommendations, and we can choose to follow them or we can choose to act in a different manner. But at the end of the day, council is charged with making the tough decisions.
Well, we've all had a chance to speak. Does anyone want a chance to speak again?
I have one more question. Isn't anyone else on this council troubled by the fact that one of the task force members said that he was misled by the, by the facilitator? That his vote was taken by phone, not in the presence of other people on the task force? That is totally non-transparent. That is, I mean, that, that runs exactly against the transparency of government that I have fought for the whole time I've been on this council. And that doesn't work for me. That the supermajority of eight represents one vote that the guy rescinded because he said he was misled into saying that. That is absolutely wrong. I don't care if I was on the winning or losing side of this. That is absolutely wrong.
Well, I, I, for one, Cecil, and I, I hear you, and, so I'm not sure, in my heart of hearts, I think that there was a quote "supermajority." However, I did sense there was a majority. And so, and I think that the task force honored the fact that, you know, when I spoke to some of the task force members, what they said was, they were reaching for a supermajority. And if they had a supermajority, they would bring one idea forward. And then I think, because it was so close, they honored that by bringing both of the core ideas forward, but I do sense that there was a majority, like Esther said, albeit maybe slim, but there was a majority. But maybe I misunderstood that, but when I talked to the task force members, that's what I heard.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm, the supermajority concept, I think, was within the task force. We didn't mandate that we needed the task force to come up with a supermajority, and I was frankly not expecting them to because there's such division on this issue. But I feel comfortable that I've heard from a majority.
Yeah, and I think the, the comment that Kelly Prime made at the very beginning was just to focus less on the vote and the process, and, and I'm totally with you on transparency and good solid process. That, that is key to anything, but is to focus less on the process and more on the work that you've done and the information that's been given to us. So that's what I'm going to do.
I would just hold out the opportunity, Mr. Barnett, who Cecil's referring to, is in the room, if we wanted to, if you wanted to let us know how you felt.
How many people do we have here?
Be receptive.
Do we have the entire task force here?
Do we have the entire task force? Do you have all 12 of you?
Well, you want to...
Vote again.
I mean, I, by my count, if you're switching your vote to in favor of home stays for ADUs, my count is seven to, seven...
Seven to seven.
For status quo, essentially.
It'll be even.
Well, you only have 12 members.
No, you only have 12 members, so...
They all voted twice.
Well, right, but the, the, in the...
It was my understanding that everyone voted twice on a sliding scale as, what did I support? I supported two, and what can I live with one? And I said, yes, I could live with one. So I thought everyone voted on a sliding scale. Of course, I was on the phone.
So you were preferring two, but you also consented to one?
Also consented to one.
Right. We, I think I understand how you all voted. I know it wasn't something that you, you, you know, the can you live with?
But the rules we were told about were live with and support. Did, you said you could live with it, could you support it? That's the key question, number one.
Yep.
It's worth noting that two other people rescinded their votes. It was actually five to seven in favor of one.
Seven to five. Is it, is it worth asking this offline, not here in the room, but to, to do, for the task force to take just an email vote?
I mean, they're all here. I think they already did.
I, I just didn't want to put anybody on the, on the spot that maybe didn't want to be put on the spot. But just to eliminate this as an issue, can we get another, can we get another vote of the task force with whatever the rule is going to be? You don't get to vote twice. Is it support, is it, no, or I'm fine with supporting twice, but is it...
No, no, you're not.
I don't know.
Because that apparently is not a valid recommendation.
Well, if this, so this is the, this is the, this thing, you know, thumbs up, I can live with it or I hate it. That's, that's kind of, that is, that's my interpretation of, of what Ed said. So however you want to frame it.
Yeah, I mean, this feels really...
Okay.
Sort of.
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, I was going to say, call the question.
We're, we're going to vote here. I mean, I think, I think we heard from everybody, and a lot of your email conversation was forwarded to me, so I heard lots more. So, so I, I feel pretty informed about where the task force came down. I understand the frustration with the two different kind of voting issues. Okay, we have a motion, a second, and it is 8:00, so we are going to vote on this item. So this is Cecil's motion. We have a second. All those in favor of Cecil's motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, maybe raise your hand for Maggie. All right? All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, aye. We're raising our hand for Maggie.
Can I make another motion?
You, you, yes. Why not?
So I would like a motion to continue this conversation in the context of the, the best place I can think to put it is HCD, because it is about housing and it's about economic development. And I know people are looking, are thinking...
Are you on, you're on?
I am, yeah, so those members...
You're not kicking this to somebody?
No, 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 I'm kicking it to me. And, and now, I make that motion not, having not spoken to the chair of HCD about that. But I have an interest, I have an interest in the, in the conversation continuing. If somebody has a suggestion for a different committee to pitch it to, I'm happy to take an amendment to that motion.
So I'm absolutely open to continue the conversation. I think that what we also need to do is being able to give staff their direction tonight. And I am very supportive of looking at these core one incentives for ADUs as long-term rentals. And so if we're saying, hey, let's do that as the primary push...
You'd second the motion.
And also continuing to explore, because the fact is, we're going to keep getting more data, we're going to keep seeing more models, we're going to keep having more opportunity to examine this stuff. So as long as we were being really clear with staff that we're not saying, hey, yeah, we're banning them and allow them. I don't want, I don't want staff to feel like we're sending both of those messages at the same time.
So do you know what you want to do with HCD?
So, so we have, we have two recommendations and then a third idea that was put on the table today.
So you want to discuss all of it, all over?
I, I think it, I, I guess, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Portland program and things such as that. Okay. Well, we have a motion to, to...
If the, if the motion is to continue the conversation, I, I don't know about process, where it needs to go or how that needs to happen. If that's the motion you're making, that's the motion.
That, the motion I'm making is to continue the conversation. I'm trying to put it somewhere, if that's, it seems to me it needs to be put somewhere.
And that's exactly the problem. I mean, if you send it to HCD, it'll be where we are, I think. And I understand your position on things, I mean, but I, I know, yeah, you're going to, you're informed by the perceived shortage of housing, and that's, that's kind of a bottom line for you. And I get that. I'm not, I don't, just, I disagree, but I understand why. I mean, you're entitled.
Well, it, it, I think it would make more sense, if we're going to go ahead and make sausage here, that it not land in one committee where you have two members who are pretty solidly on the side of maintaining the prohibition, while you have one who's really kind of a little further into exploring allowing it. If it was going to happen, it probably needs to happen across multiple committees, and it probably needs to take up a lot of staff time and a lot of committee time. So I guess that's what I'm wondering is exactly what you're asking.
Why don't, why don't we do this, I'm going to just offer this as a process issue. It is December, we do not have a second meeting in December, and we have lots of time to mull this over and talk to people and kind of triage this. And why don't, why don't we, at our next council meeting, when we've had a little bit more, and I actually have some food in me, you know, be prepared to, to recommend further steps if we're, if we're ready to get in that direction. But I think it needs...
So make it a new business item at the next meeting, so we can discuss it.
That's un, I think it's so unfinished. It goes, it's unfinished, but let's, let's do it that way and see if, you know, we can get a, get a better feel for how to further process this.
I'm fine with that. Motion withdrawn.
It's like a chronic condition or something. Right, we're always going to be working on this. Okay. So we're going to, we're going to take our, we're going to do our closed session. So that concludes this portion of your agenda. So this is an opportunity to thank you again, for everyone, and thank you for hanging out here this long. We have a motion. Go ahead, make your motion.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. Number one, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential. Pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, we're not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statute. That law makes the information privileged and confidential, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.10A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. Second, to consult with an attorney employed by the city...
Hey, folks, folks!
Second.
Yo, folks, go in the hall and start talking. We've got to finish this motion.
Second, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which attorney, client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties, city of Asheville versus the state of North Carolina. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. Third, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, or conditions of appointment of an individual, public officer, or employee. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6. And to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 160A-168, the Personnel Privacy Act, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1.
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor, please say aye. Okay, we, how many items do we have? You were drowned out by the mob.
We'll be out by midnight.
I have one, and y'all have personnel stuff.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be back, we're, we're going to do about 20 minutes. That's a goal. Beat seven. Everybody, go to the bathroom. Sorry. All right, this is a much more manageable crowd now. Let's, let's move on to our, our public hearings portion of our agenda. We have, I think Robin said something needed to go tell her when we're back in.
Oh.
Yeah, over in legal, she's probably over in legal. Oh, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
All right, the first item on our public hearings agenda is a public hearing to consider a land use incentive grant for Skyland Exchange, and I've got here that Jeff Stotter is there, is going to present this item. Nope, switch out. We're doing a switch out. Okay, that's fine.
Mayor City Council, my name is Chris Natton. I'm Community Development Analyst in the Community Economic Development Department. Thank you for your time this evening. I am here tonight to present a land use incentive grant application submitted by Hathaway Development for the project Skyland Exchange. A little brief summary of the land use incentive grant. It is a policy adopted by city council and amended in September of 2015 to assist developers in the development of affordable workforce housing. It takes into consideration the percentage of affordable units and the total development, as well as the period of affordability and proximity to jobs, transit, and other services. The project submitted, Skyland Exchange, is, does meet the minimum eligible criteria for the land use incentive grant, and it is located in South Asheville, 55 Miami Circle, which is just off of Long Shoals Road. The project does, or the developer is proposing 29 of the 290 total units to be classified as affordable units, serving households of 80% or average median income or less. It is also within close proximity to transit and schools and TC Robertson High School. Now, when looking at the policy, the, the project scores a total of 25 points, 20 points being for the 10% of affordable units for a minimum period of 15 years, and also scores five points for its proximity to TC Robertson High School. The HCD, H, the Housing Community Development Committee, in their, in their September 16th... at this recommendation of 30 points of three years, the estimated tax improvement on the property, city annual tax is approximately $167,123 per year. So, at a three-year grant, that would be equivalent to $501,369. The land use incentive grant also awards that percentage times the number of points equal the percentage of fee rebate available for building permits and zoning permits. So, at 30%, it is estimated that that value will be $26,802. So, the total land use incentive grant value for the, for the three-year and the 30 points awarded through the land use incentive grant is approximately $528,171. With that, recommend you consider, staff recommends you consider the land use incentive grant. I would like to recognize the developer is here, Hathaway Development and their team. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Do you want to hear from the developer?
I, I just have one question.
For staff?
Yes, for staff. It has been raised that, you know, this was a project that was a CZ, and so there was negotiation, et cetera, for some, you know, whatever we gave them in conditional zoning. And that, you know, part of that was the developer was, there were going to be affordable housing units associated with it. So, the question is, so we, we gave them some concessions with CZ, and now on top of it, we're giving them the Luigi, or potentially giving them the Luigi. What's our, what's our history with other projects of like giving more than one kind of incentive?
Jeff, would you like to answer?
I, I saw that hand off pretty quickly there.
Thanks, thanks for the question, Vice Mayor. So, we regularly combine incentives of various natures in order to create the percentage, in order to create the incentive for affordable housing development in the private sector. Examples is the combination of home funding with land use incentive grant funding, or housing trust funding with home funding and the land use incentive grant program. So, these have been combined many times in the past. The combining of a conditional zoning with a land use incentive grant has not yet been done. I will point out that the conditional zoning in this case was not a density bonus, it was for other reasons. And I will note that, again, as we've examined practice around the country, the combining of regulatory incentive with financial incentive appears to be a best practice nationally when it comes to voluntary inclusionary zoning programs, which is what these incentives essentially represent.
Okay. And, and thank you, I appreciate that. So, one other que, Jeff? Don't leave me.
Well, you were saying thank you like you're done.
Oh, well, thanks for that answer. Thank you for that answer.
Just getting started.
Exactly. So, is there a way that when a developer is applying for a CZ or a CUP? Is there a reason why they, they don't give us kind of the whole package and the whole request at one time? Is it just, they don't really know, they're wait, they, they can't do it if they don't get the CZ or the CUP and they don't know their financing package? I think it took some of the HCD members, I mean, we didn't, hadn't focused on the fact that they, that this developer had a CZ and they're asking for a Luigi grant. Is there a reason why we wouldn't kind of get the requests all together? Or at least have noticed that they're going to apply?
I don't think that there is a, I don't think there's a one answer to that. In, in this, in this case, these were separate processes, the timing of them was similar. So, the HCD committee saw this in September, which was somewhat concurrent with their CZ application. I think they were, we were aware that those were going on. But as you might know, this, the public hearing was put off for a number of, of, you know, it was September when the HCD committee made their representation, you know, made their recommendation, and now it's December. I don't think there was any intent to provide less than a full story. I just think that in this particular case, it was just the concurrence of how the, the application moved through the process.
Okay, I just wondered.
And I would say that, that again, we don't have the, neither the conditional zoning process nor the policy for land use incentive grant prohibit the applying for both at this time.
Jeff, I, as long as you're up here, so when we do, you know, one of the issues when we do a CZ and we say, we, you know, we strike a deal with the developer to do some percentage of affordable housing, we're, we're focusing on the rent rates. And we don't, we don't focus on the tenant. We don't have any parameters around who the tenant will be when we mandate affordable housing in the context of a CZ. But here, when you're doing the, the land use incentive grant, you're specifically specifying that it's 80% AMI or less. So, it looks to me that this grant not only addresses the rent rate, but also the tenant meeting a certain qualification of need.
It does.
Is that correct?
The units must be leased, so the rents have to be affordable to households earning 80% or less of median income, and they must be leased for the duration of that 15-year period to households, households earning 80% or less of median income, and to be monitored by the City of Asheville on an annual basis.
So, I just...
That's in the CZ too. Yeah, I was going to say, usually in our CZs, they tell us...
I think it's going to be, I think in our new template, it is also going to be part of the conditional zoning requirements as well. Because statute, the, the statute that, that we use to, that enables local government, city governments to provide affordable housing incentives, has both of those elements. It has the affordability element and the beneficiary element. In the, so that our both, our require, our, both of our programs require that now.
Now, well, okay, so at some point along the line, we phased into...
We have.
Because it, to me, it hasn't always been a point of discussion when we're doing the CZ.
Well, it, it's something I guess I'm responsible for, because there's no way to enforce it if you, if you just say affordable. You have to say affordable to who and what percentage and for how long and that, right?
I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's been one of the criticisms of our CZ process, I think, is that we've only focused on the rent rate. And, and I'm not, I don't feel like when we've done it, done this before, that that was completely clear in terms of the tenant requirements. But what it's sounding to me like is that when staff's sitting down hammering out the agreement, you're including that piece in there.
In CZs now, yes.
It's, it's... Now, it was like a month ago.
It's in your, it should be in your list of conditions when it comes to you in the separate court.
I'm not, I'm not saying it shouldn't. I'm, I agree that it should, but when we, I'm, my point is, when we approved this CZ, I don't recall a discussion about...
The level of affordability.
You do recall or you don't?
I think you just said it was in there.
It, no, she keeps saying it should be in there, which I'm agreeing that probably when it...
It was in there, it's in there.
It is in there, we're giving thumbs up back there. We got a few gallery back there.
Yeah, it's in there.
All right. Well, whether we thought it was or not, it is, and that's a good thing.
That's a good, all right.
One more question for Jeff. Do you know we're going to have to clone you before you retire completely?
You're so not allowed to leave.
Thank you, Cecil, appreciate it.
Not allowed to leave.
Institutional knowledge is huge.
Can I remake my motion to reject his resignation, his retirement?
While you're up here, and maybe we'll just keep doing this so you don't have opportunity to retire. With Harry Pelus's project down in the River District, was that not CZ and Luigi?
Actually, it was. That's a, a good, a good point, Gordon. It was, it was, at the time, it was a different Luigi as well, you know? So, we've matured our understanding of how these can, should be enforced and what the requirements of the developer should be.
We're talking heavy lingo, we probably need like subtitles on the replay of our council meetings so people know what Luigi is, is not pasta or it's...
Land use incentive grant.
Land use incentive grant, yes. Okay. Are we done with Jeff for now? For now, okay. I'm going to open the public hearing portion of this item. If there's anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. State your name, you have three minutes, watch the lights on your lectern. Unless maybe you're the developer or with the developer, speaking on behalf of the developer.
I'm on behalf of the development team. My name, good evening, Mayor, members of council, my name is Chris Day with Civil Design Concepts. I'm joined here tonight with John Spah, joined with John Spavy and Nick Hathaway of Hathaway Development, the developers.
It is late.
It is late. So, I'd first like to thank Chris, Jeff, Heather, and all of staff for their assistance with this process. We met with them early on, even really early on in the CZ process for the, for the overall project, and they were very helpful in educating myself as well as this developer in how this was a tool that could be utilized to assist this project. As they said, the project is 290 units, it's on 11.4 acres, which results in a just over 25 units an acre. The way, the ability for that to occur was a couple of years ago, you increased densities in the commercial zoning, institutional being, this zoning took it to a base density of 30 units an acre. So, it was with that increase in promoting higher densities in commercial that, that allowed us to, to do this in this location. That, the project proposes 29 units at 80% AMI for 15 years. On the land use incentive grant process, that scores 20 points. And then, as Chris made reference, the, the land use incentive grant also offers points for superior location efficiency. Those are in regards to proximity to schools, transit, and job centers. We are located directly adjacent to TC Robertson, to our project site here. This is Hendersonville Road, Long Shoals, and TC Robertson is located here. In orange, the areas you see in orange are the existing sidewalks, blue are proposed connection, pedestrian connections to that existing infrastructure, including some off-site work to provide safe access to TC Robertson. The transit stop, existing transit stop on Hendersonville Road is just under a quarter mile away from the site. We recognize that the frequency of that stop is not a half hour. The, the half hour frequency of all the routes in the town is, is very limited. I'm really only aware of the hillside one, I know that's a short route, at least in my analysis of the schedules. There's not many. And that proximity, if, at which time transit services ever continue down Long Shoals towards Biltmore Park will be even closer than the, the quarter mile.
Well, Chris, you will be happy to know that starting January 2nd, there will be service on Long Shoals Road. I was going to say, not just when. Yeah.
Great. Well, so we'll be even closer than the quarter mile that is, is shown here in my exhibit. Finally, the, the land use incentive grant awards additional points for being within a mile of a job center. It specifically references Biltmore Park, Mission, Main Campus, and downtown Asheville. We respectfully submit to you tonight that there are other job centers in the City of Asheville, and the proximity of this project, we are a mile from the intersection of Mills Gap and Hendersonville Road to the north. We have Lenamar right across the street, we have numerous banks, overlooked business park, four schools within walking distance, and all of the restaurants and other retail in that highly commercial area. So, with that, and then I do want to speak to the conversation that was occurring here with the CZ. As I said, we did meet with staff early on. If bringing the land use incentive grant in with a CZ is, is feasible, that's something I'm more than happy to direct clients towards in the future. I'll be honest with you, in my mind, I knew they followed different paths, and I knew that we kind of had to have a project in place to be able to vote and give money on. I think moving forward with them all being, occurring at the same time, I think that's a, a great idea, if that, if it's set up that way to, to make it feasible. If you have any questions, I'm available, as well as the developer.
Okay. Do you have, you don't have another speaker for the developer? No, okay. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this item? All right, I'm going to close the public...
Sorry, we did, we, we didn't, you're going to talk about the email that we got from somebody who couldn't be here?
You can talk about that when we, but I'm going to close the public hearing. So, I'm going to close the public hearing, you want to talk about the email, and then I'll entertain a motion.
Well, it was, I don't know if we do this, so we got an email from somebody asking that it be read into the record because they couldn't be here. Do we ever do that?
You can do whatever you want.
You can read it, but I've made a comment that his comments would be filed in the public office.
Okay, that's...
With a brief summary of what his comments are.
That's just to make it part of the record, that's all, that's good.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve the land use incentive grant agreement for Skyland Exchange Hathaway Development LLC.
At what level? At what level?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thirty...
The 30 points, yeah, yeah.
We have a motion, second, we have a motion of second. Any other questions or comments?
I'll vote against the motion because it gets, goes outside of our policy in regard to the transit routes.
Any other comments before we vote? All of us in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Do you need us to raise your, our hands, but did you get that? Okay, you feel like you got that.
I can raise my hand if you please.
You can raise, you raise your hands. Okay. The next one is a public hearing to consider rezoning. Thank you all for coming on that first item. A public hearing to consider rezoning 90 Ashland Avenue and 202 Ashland Avenue from Regional Business District to Central Business District, 206 Ashland Avenue, 216 Ashland Avenue, 222 Ashland Avenue, and 90 South Side from Office Business District to Central Business District, and a portion of 88 South Side from RM16 Residential Multifamily High Density District to Central Business District. Jessica Bernstein is going to talk to us about all of the rezoning.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and the public. As was stated, this is a straight rezoning. This is different from a lot of rezonings we bring before you, this is a city-initiated rezoning. We have the parcels that are, that were just read into the record, there's seven parcels, 10 pins, they're all along the east side, primarily the east side of Ashland Avenue. This is just at the edge of the Central Business District, and the parcels are shown on this exhibit map. You can see they are zoned currently Office Business and Regional Business. There's also, this is the one that is a portion of the law, is split zoned RM16. All of the parcels, with the exception of that one, are currently developed with uses that are allowed in the Central Business District. It just were developed under that Office Business or Regional Business zoning at that time. You have, council has heard and approved a number of rezoning requests that were brought forward by individual property owners over the last few years. They're detailed here on this exhibit. Whenever there is a property owner who brings forward that request, we evaluate them individually. These were all supported by staff for the reasons that we discussed at all of those hearings. The downtown master plan anticipated expanding the CBD along Ashland Avenue in this area. It's also supported by a number of areas of the, the comprehensive plan and all of your visions to encourage this walkable, mixed-use, high-density development in these areas. So, each time staff brought these individual rezoning requests to you, we would end that by saying we will be pursuing a, a multi-parcel corridor-wide rezoning and we'll bring that to you. So, that's, that is this effort now. In the meantime, or in the interim, we have met with property owners who were all supportive, and then we also met with representatives and neighbors in that South French Broad area, the neighborhood that's the RF zone... to encourage this walkable, mixed-use, high-density development in these areas. So, each time staff brought these individual rezoning requests to you, we would end that by saying we will be pursuing a multi-parcels corridor-wide rezoning, and we'll bring that to you. So, that is this effort now. In the meantime, or in the interim, we have met with property owners who were all supportive, and then we also met with representatives and neighbors in that South French Broad area, the neighborhood that's the RF zoning to the west, talking about overlaying or rezoning the parcels that are immediately adjacent to them to Central Business District. That brings with it a lot more development intensity than they were looking for. Staff did, we did our own analysis to look at how the rules and regulations of Central Business District would be good or prohibitive to development because of certain aspects of those context transition edges and other design requirements. And we actually decided that rezoning a Central Business District along that west side was not in the best interest of the city or the neighbors to the west at this time. So, where we left things with them is that we would continue looking at that stretch of corridor along the west, evaluating some of our more neighborhood-scale mixed-use districts to see if one of those would be a more appropriate fit, or if we might want to come up with a new height zone or restrictive zone, more restricted level of CBD that would be applied there in the future. But for now, we're not proposing any rezoning along that west side, and the neighbors were happy with that pause on that. So, all the rezoning is on the east side. Those parcels are all adjacent to CBD, so a lot of that conflict does not come into play. Along with the rezoning to CBD, we have to amend the height map. All the properties that are in this area are zoned in the, or have the intermediate height zone overlay, and that's what we're proposing for these. So, it would all be that lowest height zone that we have right now, which is the intermediate height zone. So, this is the proposal. We're proposing to extend that zoning to clean up that edge. It corresponds with our adopted plans and goals, and that would be to rezone the properties and apply that intermediate height zone. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions. The downtown commission unanimously supported this, as well as the planning and zoning commission. And now, that concludes my presentation.
Any other, any questions of Jessica?
May everybody like to make a motion?
But I have to open the public hearing.
Let's do that. Let's do a motion after the public hearing.
And Esther, I guess you could, but they're two separate public hearings.
Yeah, we need to, so, can I open the public hearing though on both? And then do the motion separately?
I think that's, I think that's fine, particularly if no one speaks. If they, if they do, I think they need to probably speak about, differentiate what they're speaking about, or say they're speaking for both.
All right, we're ready to open the public hearing on items B1 and 2. So, this is both the rezoning, or as Jessica calls it, a straight rezoning, and then also the amending of the height zone map. So, Todd, you're not raising your hand, you don't want to vote. Does anybody want to speak on this item? No? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to entertain now a motion from Gordon on B1. Let's do B1 first.
So, you need an entertaining motion?
Yes, entertaining, an entertaining motion.
I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Regional Business, Office Business, and RM16 to Central Business District with the amendment to the height zone map indicating these properties within the intermediate height zone, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in that one. Multiple adopted plans support expansion of urban zoning and development in this location, and two properties along the block have been rezoned in a piecemeal fashion, and this effort creates a consistent and contiguous expansion of the CBD.
Second.
Go ahead, you can take it. This is tied for a second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And before we hear the next motion, oh, I was just going to say, Gary, you better tell Roderick, we're moving. But he just walked in. Okay, so now we need a motion on B2. B, this is the height zone...
Wasn't that in his motion?
I thought it was incorporated in the initial motion.
It was in his motion.
Well, it wasn't supposed to be. It's supposed to be a separate motion.
Is that right?
But you mentioned it in your motion.
Well, it's... We don't have words for it.
We just did it, we only have one, we have a consolidium. Okay, that was good. All right.
I just read the motion and the staff report.
Yeah, our staff. Okay. Okay, so that concludes our public hearings agenda. Doesn't it? You guys are looking like, okay, it does, yeah. Don't have anything else on it. All right, so now, we don't have any unfinished business, but we do have lots of new business. And the first item of new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Pinnacle Landscapes LLC for the construction of Pritchard Park improvements. Along with that is a related budget amendment in the amount of $232,349 to establish the capital budget for the Pritchard Park improvements. Roderick?
Mayor, council, we're here tonight to bring a project to you that's long overdue. Pritchard Park opened in 2001, and not a lot of renovations have made, substantial renovations have been made since that time. Over the last eight months to nine months, we've contracted with the local company, Stephen Johnson is the local lead on it, to do a redesign of Pritchard Park. We've met with DARN, we've met with the downtown commission, the tree commission, the recreation board, so we've taken the project around town to all the stakeholder groups and have gotten favorable results from that. So, tonight, what we have in front of you is your consideration to get this project moving forward. The project will take approximately 15 weeks to complete, and we're hoping to be done by the springtime. Now, I'll let Mr. Johnson come up and go through the details of the projects with me.
Oh, no, you're going to talk about this again?
Oh, yeah. Don't, don't take that off.
It's next month, I think, we get back to that.
We're going to go over that again next month, right?
Next month from now.
Grab a mouse trouble.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Stephen Lee Johnson. I'm with SiteWork Studios. We're landscape architects, and as Roderick just mentioned, we were commissioned to assist with developing improvements for Pritchard Park. As we all know, Pritchard Park is what we would call a heavily-used urban park. It's in the center of Asheville. It's also a very small park, and it's a park that hasn't seen major improvements over the last 15 years. Thanks to the many, many volunteer hours by downtown neighbors and business owners, as well as increased maintenance by the city of Asheville, the park is now more popular than ever. This popularity, though, has not been easy on the park. Today, there are three primary current issues for improvement plans that we're going to address right now. And I think I hit, there we go. So, the primary current issues include security, landscape protection, and appearance. The proposed improvements for security include new plantings that offer clear visibility that meet crime prevention guidelines, new LED lighting throughout, new ornamental fencing. With the landscape protection, we've researched and cataloged every tree in the park. We've noted lots of improvements that can occur, including alleviating the compacted soils with the use of airspade techniques. There's new ornamental fencing that's planned to go around the landscape beds and protect the new plantings and the existing tree roots. Also importantly, there's a planned automatic irrigation system that's been designed that will be installed to provide adequate water for the new plantings. In terms of appearance, first and foremost, lots of new plantings. The park is almost completely void of any ground layer plantings right now because of all the heavy intense use, and lots of new plants are planned. Additional ornamental rock are planned to be sited around the existing amphitheater. The goal is to expand the use area in that area. Replacement of all of the existing signage with a nice, clean, clear, comprehensive signage package, a year-round drinking fountain, things like trash receptacles, new benches, and also ornamental tiles that will be added into the existing brick columns that will note that it's actually Pritchard Park and help identify the area. I'm going to go through a couple of brief graphics that help explain to everybody exactly what's happening, but this is Pritchard Park in plan view, and this is the existing tree canopy. And as we all know, it is, in the summertime, it's a shady oasis in downtown Asheville. Unfortunately, tree roots are very sensitive, and the goal with tree roots is to keep traffic off of them, and that's the goal, one of the goals of this project. So, this is the existing tree canopy. This is the existing planting area that will be planted with a wide variety of plants that should have seasonal interest all year round. We've also carefully considered long-term maintenance issues with this, and again, mature heights for crime safety, crime and safety. On the edges, we talked about the perimeter fencing. That pink line represents the areas where there will be an ornamental low fence that will keep people from going into the planting areas, but also, more importantly, keep people off of the tree roots and give the plants a good fighting chance to survive and thrive, and hopefully to create a nice green oasis downtown. This graphic demonstrates another component of the project, and that is some maintenance and some new elements located in the hardscape. So, things like expansion joints, old mortar joints, hand railings that need to be repainted, pressure washing, replacement of brick, that type of thing is included in this area. There's really not, this is really not a redesign of Pritchard Park. This is Pritchard Park improvements. This graphic demonstrates areas where new site amenities are going to be located, new benches, and some of the items already mentioned, and as you can see, kind of around the amphitheater, areas where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic right now, where they're going to be paved with stone to kind of blend with the existing rock outcrops. Again, a critical component of the improvement project is a new lighting scheme for the park, and these are all new LED lighting fixtures. This is a master plan of the overall park. With any landscape area in an urban center of town like this, maintenance, long-term maintenance is a major priority. The city is already committed to professional landscape maintenance to occur in the new park, and Roderick has already gone over the construction schedule. I'm not going to repeat that, but it's, this has all been designed to take place in the season when the park should be least used. The park will not be closed down completely. Portions will, but the sidewalks around the park will be remained open at all times. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions?
Yeah. I understand trees pretty well, and I understand needing not to compact the roots, but we don't put fences around the trees in the other parks out in front of, out in front of this building, for instance, or Aston Park. We aren't protecting the trees. This strikes me as trying to exclude people from the park part of this park. And you talk about the shade, well, you're keeping people from getting under the trees that provide the shade. I don't quite get the railings. It seems like there's an element in the downtown community who want to exclude as many people as possible from Pritchard Park, and this looks to me like a step toward doing that. So, it strikes me.
Do you have any imagery of the fencing or more description?
I don't. I don't hear, but it's very similar to what's currently around the Vance Monument. It's a simple, black steel picket.
And how high?
I believe it's 40 inches. But I would say that in terms of a planting area, plants and foot traffic don't work, and I think you can see some of the evidence of, in any urban park, any successful urban park, having, this is a standard urban kind of boundary situation, and all of the benches that are along the walkways, I mean, during the summer, the entire center of this park is shaded. And I think that it's a balance between, you know, if more areas are to be created where pedestrians and park users can get closer to the trees, then we need more paved area. But the fact is that this park was designed to have a lot of plantings in it. There's a lot of soil area in here. And so, but there are no hardscape, there are no hardscape areas, there are no bench areas that are being removed in this. They're being expanded. And I think that in terms of the citizens of Asheville having a green park that has well-taken care of landscaping, that is in a shaded environment, you have to have perimeter edge control. There's just, there's not a way to control, and it also gives the resource officers that are in the park throughout the day the opportunity, along with proper signage, the opportunity to, you know, keep people from, you know, crossing, right now, crossing Patton Avenue in the middle of Patton Avenue and cutting through the park, which is a really dangerous situation. It keeps people in the crosswalks. So, it's, I personally don't see it as a situation where we're limiting people access to the park. If anything, it's opening opportunities to enjoy it.
Okay, will the stepped seating be continuously open during this process?
I think it's going to be, for the majority of the construction process, it will be. There are some mortar repairs that are occurring in that area. Part of the construction documents do call for very close coordination with city staff with any potential events that may be occurring to look into the future with closings, but the mortar work on this will occur very quickly.
Okay, because I work with a church group that's part of the breakfasts that are served there every Sunday morning, and I wouldn't want to see those interfered with. And will it interfere with the drum circles during the reconstruction?
I think it's the intent that there's no interference with the drum circle activity.
Because you'd have a revolution.
Oh, trust me, yeah.
You would. We would just send them all your way.
So, any other questions here?
No, I appreciate the question from Councilman Bothwell, though, just making sure that we are being sensitive to homeless populations and other folks who are also citizens who are utilizing that public space. I'm pretty sure that's where he was headed with that discussion, and so, I think that I'd like to move to approve this, and at the same time, add a whereas into the resolution of authorization that simply states whereas the city promotes inclusion and diversity of its citizenry.
And then, you want to add, you want to state the rest of the motion?
Is it in here?
Well, not really, resolution.
I'd like to move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Pinnacle Landscapes for the construction of Pritchard Park improvements with the amendment of the whereas I just noted.
Second.
Before we call a question, can you go back to where the fences are? The fencing around the area?
Maggie, do I need a separate vote on that budget amendment? Yep.
Right there, the purple.
The blue is already a wall, right?
Right, and the red is the new fence.
It's the new fence. Are there individuals already in those areas? Traffic?
Traffic areas.
Well, I think that, you know, in a typical drum circle evening, if the park is packed, the huge red maple that's in the center of the park has dozens of people standing on its tree roots. And so, I think that right now, there are, there are people that maybe jumped the brick wall that kind of cut through the park. That may still occur, but it's going to be discouraged. Resource officers will have the tools and the signage to help discourage that, but you know, there are people that probably walk through there now as a shortcut through the park.
Closer to that.
Yeah. So, I know I just made this motion, I think I'm about to revise it. I misunderstood where the fences were. I thought they were just in circles around the trees. And I think I'd like to have another, can ask if y'all might be willing to have another go at this and open up a little more of that space. So, I guess I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay, so, you can withdraw your motion. Maybe we need to back up a little bit here. My understanding is, this project has been, has it been the subject of any community meetings?
It has been extensive review. Downtown Commission, Downtown Business Association, Downtown Residents Association have had presentations, and there have been no negative comments. Everybody's been very favorable of what's been presented so far.
You know, and it would be helpful to me, I mean, I'm sitting here running through all the cities I've ever been in and how they do their parks, whether it's Paris, or whether it's Savannah, or, and there certainly are high, highly-utilized parks that have this kind of protective decorative fencing, Central Park, whatever. So, I think that you didn't just dream this up, this concept of the fencing.
Right, yeah. Lots of presidents for this, but, yeah.
But we have some level of discomfort around it.
Small park, just go a little smaller.
It feels like it will get smaller. So, you know, this is a challenge. I've noticed already, our Pax Square Park out front is now dirt park and has no grass left in it, and it, because people are using it, and apparently SOT does not like people to use it. So, you know, I do see that we need a balance because we have some... So, you know, I do see that we need a balance because we have some, it's hard to enjoy a dirt park versus a green park. And so, how do we make sure we can keep our parks healthy but accessible? So, you know, what would, what is the pleasure of the council, and since we are admittedly not landscape architects, right? None of us are professional park designers, so we do have to lean on recommendations. But I think we've heard enough from different groups that utilize the downtown that aren't covered by the groups you just mentioned, that will have a reaction to this and that will not be favorable, that we need to work in here to try to balance this.
Yeah. The three groups that reviewed it are all the ones who tend to not want the people who are mostly in the park, or many of the people who are in the park.
This is the hipster city struggle.
Yeah. I mean, darn calls itself darn for a reason.
Can I coin that phrase, the hipster city struggle? So, what would you, what would you like to?
Well, let me ask a question. In any of the places where this plan was presented, did any, did any homeless advocates show up and express concern about this?
I'm not aware of any. I do know that there were city staff at each of the meetings, but I'm not aware of any that were there.
How about we do this? You want to refer this plan to homeless advisory and do a little more vetting?
They would really offer some good perspective.
Can we do a little more process around the plan?
Pulling the fencing a little closer into the, just the trees.
Yeah, I appreciate all the input that's come from those other folks as well. I just think that we need a little, some other perspectives just to make sure we nail this thing first time.
We may have to up your contract. But why don't we see if we can just run this through a few more, a little more vetting since this is such a central part of the city, and we know that there are a lot, a lot of people that have an opinion about this park.
Let me just ask, if I could, to follow up on that. It might be helpful to see if you have them, or even if it may be worth compensating to have them produced, to see renderings from ground level.
Yeah.
So, what are you, how high are the fences? What do they look like? If you're sitting in the bench, some vantage points at human scale so that people can actually see what you're looking at.
And I think that would be helpful. I don't think it'll negate the need to take this through a little bit more vetting.
That was an Ann suggestion.
Yes, an Ann. Great. Okay. So, are we just nodding to, chatters, are we just nodding to keep, we're going to, all right.
Bring it back a month for now.
That'd be great. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
We're probably messing up the construction schedule, too. But anyway, that's how we are. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Partnership.
Okay, new business. We're Owen, Owen, Owen.
I'll ask, and then you can.
Okay. Gordon, you are on my agenda as discussing this next item, consideration of a partnership with Asheville-Bunkham Preschool Planning Collaborative. You are recusing yourself. Do you want us to do a motion?
Well, I just would ask to be recused from this item as I am on the board of one of the convening organizations, Ann.
Well, does that mean we should move it down the schedule so we can let you go?
We've got a representative who's been waiting all night for this.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
So, I move to recuse Gwen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You don't really have to go anywhere because it's not a.
I will be happy to sit here. You're not going to say anything secret, are you?
Right. Let's talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor. This, the Asheville-Bunkham Preschool Planning Collaborative was started last year, and it is a whole lot of people from a whole lot of sectors coming together, trying to figure out how to have universal access to pre-K in the community. They have brought together a broad array of funding partners to help fund a planning phase of this effort. And they had, they came to the city with a very small ask of $4,000 to become a part of this collaborative. There's a representative of the collaborative here who's waited four and a half hours, and I wondered if we might give her a minute or two just to introduce herself and.
Oh, I thought we were going to give her a round of applause.
Thanks for sticking it out, Jenny.
She deserves that, too. Don't go to sleep on us.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor of the County and Council. And I really don't have any kind of formal presentation. I'm Jenny Eblin. I'm one of the co-chairs of the steering committee. I just know there maybe was potentially a lack of information on this, so I was just here to answer any questions that you might have before you vote.
Okay.
Thanks for your work.
So, we've heard a brief presentation. We have someone here if there's any questions, discussion, questions, a motion?
I got a question, but it's to how this is structured. So, I just want to clarify. So, it is a consideration of a partnership with the Asheville-Bunkham Preschool Planning Collaborative. And what I want to know is, can we clarify, how does a partnership relate to the funding aspect of this ask? And is it a reoccurring thing, or is it a enter into a partnership with a one-time ask and then the continuation of some sort of support going forward?
Right. And it's very interesting because that is a question that we've not really discussed yet. There is not really a formal partnership. The partnership are those organizations that are at the table that are trying to create this plan to increase access to early kindergarten education. So, there's not a correlation between the funding and being a partner. The partner has actually been more of those that are at the table. So, but I guess we were, made a presumption that that's what that meant for Nashville City Council. As far as on, so it doesn't require, being a partner does not require the funding is something that we request and that we need in this planning phase. But we do have another ongoing planning phase that we have not sought funding for. And most of the funding is going to consultant and admin support. There's been hundreds of volunteer hours towards this initiative. And it might be potential that we would ask our partners again to support that part, that next phase. We will, and we have the huge part of implementation, which will be probably several years down, but that would be, we're talking about extremely large amounts of money, and that would not be asked to be furnished by our partners at this point in time. Did that answer your question, sir?
It did.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah. I'll just mention, for people who weren't at HCD, which is most of us, the discussion around this was not around the quality of the work or the virtue of the project. We all agreed about that. But what this points up, I think this is maybe the third or fourth request that has come to us for essentially strategic partnership support outside of our regular strategic partnership budgeting process. And so, I just want to suggest that as we go forward, or in our budgeting for next year, that perhaps we consider reserving some of our strategic partnership money out so that we can, we have a pot of money that is available for requests like this that come in not on our regular schedule. So.
It would be really helpful to, I agree, to have a look at that whole process and to figure out how we can do really good vetting and have some kind of competitive prioritization of what we're going to fund, but at the same time, be able to have, when strong partners come through with a calendar that doesn't match ours, but they meet all the criteria for the kind of thing we want to see, that we can find a way to do that.
Yeah.
At all, I'm not sure how to do it, but I hope we can get some help with that.
How do we work that, how do we work through that, then? Where does that start?
Governance.
Oh, just because.
You're not on for something, are you, tonight? Because you're not on that meeting.
I don't know. I feel like that's an HCD thing.
I think it's a PED thing, probably.
Oh, an HCD thing, PED.
Could it be a subset of the fund balance somehow?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a partnership agreement with the Asheville-Bunkham Preschool Planning Collaborative and the associated budget amendment and the added amount of $4,000.
I'd like to second that, but I'd also like to say a few things. As an individual who has had experience in early childhood education, working for Asheville City Schools preschool, I think that the pathways to equity and opportunity, the first hurdle of that begins at birth, and then you have early childhood education. And I've been able to see that there are many individuals who are on waiting list, who don't have access to high-quality, affordable, pre-K, three and four-year-olds. I think it's very important that we make this step toward making sure that everyone in Asheville and Bunkham County have some sort of access to early childhood education, and specifically, pre-K for three and four-year-olds, which is where I was at. So, I will second that motion, but I also understand in some of the materials that I saw, that you have come to us almost, not necessarily last, but in the ending part of the funding process, and there is a $6,000 gap, I'm assuming. So, I would like to second the motion, but make an amendment to that to fund the amount of $6,200.
Is that correct, there?
Just delirious.
Did you want my comments on that?
Just double checking Keith's numbers over here.
He's trying to make sure that that's actually what the final gap is.
That is the gap of this planning phase. Yes, sir.
I will amend my motion to reflect $6,200.
Well, can I ask, Jenny, are there any other outstanding requests out to other groups?
Yes, we have made a request to the county. They're a partner.
Well, they're going to be.
Well, we're making a request to all of our partner organizations. Most of the nonprofits, it has not been within their this calendar year budget, so we've not received this calendar year money from them, but we have made a request from the county, and I have, we don't have any, and with results of that one.
Please, it's not.
But, again, this is a, this is a phase that ends in May, and there's another very significant phase, which is going back to the community, and we don't have funding for that either. So, any monies that we receive that we did not spend in this phase would go into the next phase automatically.
It's my understanding this is the second phase of many. The first phase had been completed, and then this is the second phase.
Yes, sir. The first phase was just setting up the process. The second phase, the outcome should be a plan. And the next phase will be taking that plan more out to the community and getting buy-in from the community, getting feedback on the plan, and talking more to providers that want to participate in it.
I amend my motion to reflect $6,200.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to fund this ask for $6,200. Is there anyone else that has a question or a comment? Is there anyone who wishes to comment on the motion? We're getting down to the bottom of the barrel here.
I hope the county doesn't take that as a, as a sign that they should not invest in.
Now, they're going to want to.
There's a, there's a lot of strong support over there. I think I'm really looking forward to this being a broad and enduring, lengthy partnership.
Yes.
Okay. I don't see anyone who wants to comment on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Ooh, last page of my agenda. This is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to solicit qualifications from professionals to evaluate and advise city council on the design of the I-26 connector project. I am assigned to present this item. And let me just briefly describe the origins of this. As you all know, I-26 is a major construction project happening at some point in the near future in Asheville. And, and right now, Julie and Gwen have been serving on a working group. And we've had many community meetings. Most recently, there was a very large meeting in Monford, and the Monford community is very active on the I-26 project, as are a lot of other groups. And there began a discussion about whether or not the city could benefit from some technical expertise in assisting us with our monthly discussions with the DOT about the I-26 project. Basically, the plan, the project right now is at a sort of a rough draft stage, and there's a lot of minutia that need to be dealt with that could significantly improve the project. And so, we, you know, this is kind of a one-in-a-lifetime type of project, and you don't typically have an entire staff that has this level of expertise on highway projects. So, the thinking here is that we could really benefit from having some technical expertise. So, Kathy took a stab at drafting a description for an RFP to get, push out there to see what kind of consultant we could get, some engineering, probably. And she was good enough to let me revise it to make sure it was broad enough to capture everything this group could do for us. And thank you to Julie for helping me with all the terminology. And thank you for the group out of Monford who helped make the specific suggestion about this. So, what you've got for you is a edited version of what is attached to the council agenda, which broadens the description of what the consultant's services might include. The multidisciplinary expertise would include, but not be limited to, review and analysis of roadway design and engineering, review and analysis of noise studies and mitigation, review and analysis of traffic forecasts and simulations, review and analysis of NC DOT's construction plans and inherent assumptions. Inherent assumptions include roadway design, lane closures, blasting, retaining walls, construction-related impacts, pedestrian and bike connectivity and accessibility, greenway planning and connectivity, and stormwater mitigation. So, we really tried to capture pretty much everything having to do with this project and enable the multidisciplinary expert or experts to be able to help advise us about any of those items. That is the presentation. Any questions?
I make a motion, we approve the resolution to authorize the city manager to solicit qualifications to assist us on I-26.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment? Okay.
Is there anyone here?
Is there anyone here? No.
Sasha gets the endurance.
Yeah, she does.
If I may just, real quickly, to, in order, because I've talked to council members about this, in order to expedite this, it is a request for qualifications, which will streamline the response process and puts them in position in March to have a recommendation.
Thank you.
Or at least in March, start evaluating responses.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving right along. The next item is consideration of supporting the African-American Heritage Commission's efforts to commemorate the contributions of the African-American community in Bunkham County and Asheville, and acceptance of the $10,000 from Bunkham County Board of Commissioners. Sasha, you are here. We're, we, so, we don't necessarily need, we're just going to, let me briefly just describe, explain this. We now have an African-American Heritage Commission, as many people know. And the city and the county have been talking, and the county has passed a funding opportunity there in the amount of $10,000. And the idea here is that we will partner with them equally, with our contribution of $10,000, in order to help with a visioning process to be led by the African-American Heritage Commission to do just what this description says, to commemorate the contributions of the African-American community in Bunkham County and Asheville. This is the visioning process, a community outreach process. There will be, hopefully, in this, as a result of this process and in the recommendation, some further suggestions for funding of whatever it is that the recommendation is, whether it's a memorial or whatever it might be. So, the county has already voted to fund this, and so this would be us doing our part. Anybody have a question? Or Sasha's been here, just waiting. Sasha is the chair of our African-American Heritage Commission.
The only question I'd have is, do we need to talk about the funding sources?
Of the $10,000? We can't. Do you have a question? There is a question about the funding source.
We need a budget amendment, I believe.
It would be a budget amendment, fund balance. So, you need to authorize a move to support the $10,000, provide a $10,000 master, a $20,000 project, do a budget amendment for fund balance, and third, a budget amendment to accept the county's, county's $10,000.
Yeah, that part, the acceptance in here.
So, it'd be really three parts of that motion, now to get her done.
So, but you're suggesting it come out of fund balance, not, okay? Because that's, it doesn't.
Seems to be the theme of the new business items tonight. Which is fine. It's worthy expense. We saw the presentation tonight. We're in great position to fund this project.
And having a marker at Pac Square was on our strategic goals list for the year?
Although, we don't want to dictate what the final result may be. The community's visioning process may result in a different suggestion.
No, absolutely, absolutely. That was a starting point, as far as a way of saying this kind of thing.
Yeah. It's definitely captured within our strategic plan and goals. Absolutely.
So, thank you for pulling it all together to help us get that done. I'd love to hear from you for a moment, if you'd like to.
Yeah, you waited all this time. Tell us the bedtime story.
I also want to thank you as a Bunkham County foster parent with a three-year-old at home who is attending Head Start, and we just had a meeting. And we just had a meeting, you know, a few weeks ago, and I was thinking how, you know, it's sad, but we're fortunate that she's so needy that she gets to get quality, you know, early childhood education. Not every child gets that, and we were thinking, we're very fortunate, but I wish every child had that opportunity. And I thank you for every effort to bring that to more young people. And I also thank you for your support of our commission. I think there's, you know, a lot of question in the community, like, what are they doing? I felt like, like we're hurting cats in a way, and, but we are hopeful, we're up to our eight of nine members. We are excited about the racial equity program, and also hearing about meetings going on about the town branch markers, that there are markers going to be placed around the city, and hopefully our efforts can coordinate with those. And I'm just grateful for the, also the opportunity, I don't know if you're aware, that Michelle Lanier, the chair of the African American Heritage Commission for the state of North Carolina, will be providing some pro bono help for us with budgeting and preparing for this next step. So, we're just grateful and excited and hopeful, and I, in my spare time, I'm just researching all the time. There's so much wonderful history, and we're excited to share it with the whole city and county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last track, do we already have a motion?
No.
Okay.
I move that we provide the $10,000 to the African American Heritage Commission for the visioning process, that we make a budget amendment to use the money from the fund balance for that purpose, and that we accept the $10,000 from the county commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here who could comment on this? I don't know that anyone here.
Still stinking.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, and so for the last item. Oh, look, I'm almost meeting you.
Yeah, well, too late.
It's up to you now.
Okay, so, the boards and commission, last time, we held, held open the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee so that we could get, there's four openings there, and we wanted to wait to get back committees' recommendations, and they would recommend, and so would the boards and commissions, that we would appoint John Rakes, Jean Bell, and Dale Davidson, and then, and that we would reopen the application process for the homeless or formerly homeless seat. So, that's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? I will turn back over to you.
Okay, all right. Maggie, what did you say, 11:15? I mean, come on.
Come on.
Yeah, 10:40.